Zoning Board of Appeals is opening with the first item on our agenda, which is a continuation hearing for S U B Hingham LLC, eight ninety-five to nine oh one Main Street. For purposes of the open meeting law, these proceedings are being recorded. Who's here for the applicant?
Hi, I'm Mr. Chairman, Jeff Bengler from S U B L L C.
And my understanding is the purpose of this meeting is really an update.
Quickly, an update and to schedule the next hearing.
Exactly.
We will have our full plan set, submit it to the town on Friday. We'll submit our copy and the town copies, we'll also submit directly to your review consultant. And then, I think reasonable the week of April seventh will give your peer review consultants, as well as the town itself, a minimum of two weeks to look at the revised plans. So hopefully, we can find a date that works for the board on the week of April seventh.
So is this a still the townhouse format? Or is this a revised, completely revised building as was suggested to the captain?
It's revised.
Then you can't submit it. It has to under, you can't submit it to the town first. Under fifty-six point oh four five, you have to submit to the subsidizing agency in writing of all changes to what you submitted with the eligibility letter?
We've already talked to Mass Housing.
Well, it doesn't matter. Can I read the regulation?
I'm familiar with the regulations.
One second, just, okay. Yes, a little, a little more.
Okay. So the regulation says, "If the applicant desires to change aspects of his proposal that would affect the project eligibility requirement, after it has received a determination of project eligibility, it shall notify the subsidizing agency in writing of such changes with a copy to D H C D, the chief executive officer of the municipality, which is the board of selectmen, and the board of appeals." Neither the board of selectmen nor the board of appeals have received a copy of such notification in writing, and upon submitting that, the chief executive officer of the municipality or the board may request that the subsidizing agency review those changes before any determination of whether they're substantial or not is bound. So he can submit them, but the board is not obligated to review them because he hasn't followed the regulations.
Thank you. Susan, yes, sir. Jeff, you were, you were going to say something.
We've dealt with this frequently with Mass Housing. We've already talked to Mass Housing. They said, "We'll review this upon final approval." Is the density different? No. Is the affordability the same? Yes. Is it still for sale? Yes. So they don't have a problem with that. If council wants us to submit that and submit it to the D H C D and the board of selectmen, we can do that. What we've done with many other municipalities, and they'll say, "We'll bring, we'll look at it more closely at final approval, get back to us after you have a permit." So if, if, and that, and this is coming directly from the subsidizing agency, we deal with it all the time. If that doesn't appease council, we'll provide you with the requisite language that you're looking for.
Um, Joe, well, first of all, I would say that the town would like the applicant to comply with the regulations to the same extent that the applicant would like the town to comply with forty days. If the subsidizing agency finds that the changes are substantial, it shall ordinarily defer any review until the board has issued a permit, except if the chief executive officer of the municipality or the board requests otherwise. So by not submitting in writing and copying the town, they are depriving the town of its ability to request the subsidizing agency to review it in advance of issuing the town grants a permit. Does, I, I can't speak for the board of selectmen, the zoning board is here. Do you wish to waive your right to request that?
Now, clearly, we don't wish to waive our rights. I guess the question is, from a procedural standpoint, they haven't submitted these revised plans yet.
Right.
So we can speculate as to what they contain, or we can actually see them, and then once we see them, we can make the determination as to whether or not the regulations would have required them to submit it to the subsidizing agency. Or are you saying that we need to make that determination advance even before we see the revised plans?
Yeah, well, that's true. They have not been formally submitted to the zoning board.
Right. So it would seem to me that the applicant should be making the submission, and we should look at it and say, either it seems relatively minor, or it seems major. And if it is of such a nature that it would require, under the regulations, initial submission to the subsidizing agency, we can notify the applicant and insist on our rights.
Right. And typically, if there's a modification after a permit's been issued, for example, Linden Pond, that is the process. However, the applicant has an affirmative obligation, under the regulations, to submit those changes in writing directly to the subsidizing agency.
Right. But their failure to do so would not rob this board
No.
of its ability to insist that the regulations be honored.
Right.
And that would be the intention of this board.
Right. I will say that one of the findings of the subsidizing agency was that the site plan includes eight multifamily buildings and one single-family home built along a winding internal roadway, et cetera. And that the placement of the buildings will serve to limit visual impact. So those are findings of subsidizing agency.
Oh, yeah, and they were findings in terms of consistency with the neighborhood.
Exactly.
Right, exactly. So what you're saying makes sense, but at this point, I think it's speculative, since we haven't seen exactly what's being submitted. So...
Well, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not going to submit it now until we have that correspondence. I mean, shame on us for trying to, you know, modify the plan to meet, use the Concom and board of health and the zoning board and the neighbors, and then, you know, we're, I understand the regulations, but I, I mean, we've, I don't think the zoning board can say throughout the process that we've not been, attempts to work with the zoning board all the time and whatnot.
Jeff, have you heard any of us say that?
No, not.
Okay. So let me see if I, if I understand this. You are going to get us plans by Friday?
I was.
Well, okay, all right. Or, or you could, you'll make your own decision.
Right.
Which means the plans will be available to submit to Mass Housing for comment as well this week.
Yeah.
Okay? So you could do that, you could comply with the regulations, and then, based on your experience and what you've just said, presumably, Mass Housing would do a very, a quick turnaround on this and say, "Yeah, we don't, we don't see an issue," and push it back to our board, correct?
That's what I'm saying.
I don't see this, I, I think what town council is saying is, there is a procedure, and it would be best if you followed it. It's certainly no hardship to follow it, because the plans are right there. I mean, they're going to be ready on Friday.
Right.
So you submit them to, you can submit them to us simultaneously, and that will just check a box for you. Submit it to Mass Housing, Mass Housing will turn around, they're commenting, Terry, and then we'll be on our way. And we're not going to, we're not going to have another meeting until the first or second week of April anyway, so I, I don't see the...
Well, I guess the, the distinction is that, once they're submitted, we have the ability to request that the subsidizing agency do a more in-depth review, as opposed to just...
For consistency with the site, the original site eligibility.
Right. So, so before Mass Housing can sort of say, "We've done our job, they have to hear from us?"
Well, no, we have the ability to make that request.
Yeah, they, they usually punt. They get it, and then they say, "Oh."
We'll just wait, basically.
"We're just going to sit here and wait and see what happens." However, the town, this board and/or the board of selectmen, have the ability to say to Mass Housing, "No, we don't want you to waive. We want you to revisit the eligibility of this project and the changes."
Okay. So, so I, and I guess that is typically triggered by our receiving a copy of your transmittal letter to the subsidizing agency. And so you can either go that route, or if you submit it here, we will inform them that we had not yet received this, the transmittal letter, but we're going to insist on following the regulations in any event. So your, your choice as, as how you'd like to proceed my recommendation is that you actually give the letter to the subsidizing agency, copy to us and the board of selectmen, and then we will respond accordingly, unless, unless you, you think that's going to create some problems.
The regu, I mean, the regulations are the regulations, so I, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Whether or not it causes problems or not, but, I mean, I, I'm not going to say anymore.
Okay. So at this point, Susan, would you, I'm not sure when we're meeting next to evaluate this, and I want to make sure that we've got someone authorized to respond either to the submission or to the letter, to respond back to the subsidizing agency insisting that they do a more thorough review.
Right. Well, Emily's probably going to talk to you at the end if something's come in that you have to respond to within twenty days. So you may have to meet anyway.
Yeah.
But the board of selectmen, obviously, I think in the past, has collected comments from Stan, and then submitted a letter on behalf of the town, so I can alert the town administrator that this might be coming.
Right.
So they're on the lookout for it, and then we'll...
I mean, the, the, the whole part of the regulations, I understand. Just for the record, I think it would be in bad faith if the town asked for a more thorough review at this point, only because all the changes that we've made are in response to comments that we've heard from board of health, Concom, the neighborhood, not so much the board. So the changes we've made have not been pursued independently by us or our own personal benefit. They've been in response to concerns raised by the town. So for the town then to turn around and say, "Oh, we want a whole thorough review because this is different," it's different because we made it different, and the town has asked us to make it.
But I, I guess the distinction here is, what the subsidizing agency is looking at is not your motive for making the change, but whether or not the change that you're proposing actually impacts the basis for them having made the decision to subsidize. And from what I'm hearing, there may be a reason to say, "Well, it no longer is consistent with their expectations for what this project was going to be," so it could affect the subsidizing agency's decision. It's not a question of your motive, it's a question of the impact.
And I understand that, and I'm telling you that we will, we will provide a letter from Mass Housing that says, "This is fine, go forward with the zoning board." What council is saying is, the zoning board or the selectmen can then say, "We're not satisfied with that Mass Housing, do a more thorough review." And what I'm saying is, if the town took that posture, I would think that was in bad faith, because all the changes that we've made have been in response to issues and concerns and requests that we've heard over the last nine months.
Well, I, I would take issue with that. I don't think our insistence on following the regulations would indicate any bad faith. If, if anything, it would indicate that we want to make sure that the project is being pursued in the best interest of the town. And that is the mission of this board, and we're going to adhere to that.
Right.
So with that, I think we should make sure, given timing, that we at least authorize the zoning administrator to take appropriate action to make sure that the regulation, that our rights under the regulations are followed, and to the extent that we don't mean that the zoning administrator is authorized to insist that, to contact the subsidizing agency to make sure that a more thorough review is pursued.
Right. I mean, I, you know, Jeff, in the, in the interest of, you know, kind of, what, what I would suggest, because assuming that letter comes in
Yeah.
and it goes to the board of selectmen's office, I will get that phone call as soon as it lands on Ted's desk. And what I would suggest is, at the time that they respond, that they say, you know, "We want you to look at this now," that they incorporate all the reasons why they want it to be looked at. Not just saying, "We want you to look at it," but give you the reasons why they want to look at it, so that that would be efficient.
Right.
It would be responsive, and then, you know, there can be a determination.
Can I ask a question? Why, why would it be the zoning board and the board of selectmen that had any involvement with the...
I, I think the very simple answer is that D H C D's regulations specifically say that the executive authority, namely, the board of selectmen, are one of the agencies that are supposed to make this determination.
Or the zoning board.
No, not or, it's, it's, it's add.
And, you have to notify both, under the regulations.
Right.
And both add requests
Right.
that be reviewed. And in the past, and I believe even with this project, although I could be incorrect, but I believe that, and Emily, because this was before you were here, when it first...
Were you here when this first started, this project?
No. But I believe the way it's worked, and it's worked in the past, is that one consolidated letter goes from the town that incorporates all of the comments of D W, the fire department, and this one, so that it's compact and it's all in one place, so.
And whether that ultimately comes under the signature of the board of selectmen, or the zoning board, or both, I'm not going to quibble about, but it's good that we'll make sure that, that we follow what needs to be done. So I would accept a motion for that we authorize as a zoning administrator to review any filings from S U B and make the determination, if a zoning board meeting is not otherwise scheduled, to make the determination to pursue with the subsidizing agency the town's rights. So moved.
Okay.
No further discussion.
All favor.
Aye.
So with that, we'll either receive your submission or see the letter, and we will proceed accordingly.
But do you want to schedule meetings, though?
Yes. I guess we should, we should schedule meetings, so at least we've got a backdrop for how we're going to proceed. So if the, here, if the material's coming in this Friday, when is our next scheduled meeting?
Your next regular meeting is April sixteenth.
Yeah.
You just have to tell us where we're at right now.
But we would not have, I want to make sure we have appropriate reviews, so that we're not occupying people's time necessarily.
Jeff, well, the revised plan continue to need waivers from local board of health or conservation commission regulations for requiring...
Nothing, there's, there's a much shorter waiver.
But are there fewer agencies involved?
Yeah.
So, okay. I mean, it's hard to tell. I think...
What's the, what's the outside date? Oh, May four, twenty-first is the deadline to send it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, April, so that's the decision deadline, the deadline to close the hearing is April eleventh.
Even after the, I thought it was May, that after the most recent continuance of?
That was the deadline to render our decision was May twenty-first, but not...
Oh, so it's...
Yeah.
Can we just, can we just file, write, you have some new files? What is it? Sorry, thank you. Yeah, April eleventh, so, so it's only...
If it's coming in Friday, yeah. We can't...
This is somewhere. I didn't answer it on that one.
So, all right, I, I think either we should get continuance, or we're going to need to deny, because we don't have enough information, so that's not in anyone's interest. So let's, what do we want, what do we continue to?
Do I pick April sixteenth, since you will be...
Yeah, we, yes.
...meeting at that evening anyways.
I think we should do that.
But that's after the April one...
Right, well, we're going to go over some dates, make sure that they're available.
I'll work with them, I'll leave that up to the timing of the zoning board's date.
Right, but we, but we're going to need to vote some dates.
I think you need them to commit.
No, I know, but I'm saying, after we vote the date, I will make sure that we provide appropriate right, and right, what you're, what you're asking.
All right, okay. So if we have a hearing on the sixteenth of April, it's, without seeing the plans, it's hard to know if that's going to be the only hearing we're going to need.
I would say safely, you'll need, just knowing how it would work for the past seven months.
Yeah.
You'll need a hearing that night, and you'll need another hearing, too.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it's realistic. I mean, as I said, the waiver list, there's no, there's one new waiver, and it's about half a committed.
Yep.
And, you know, so, and it's from a peer review standpoint, it's much simpler to, so hopefully, whatever, what did you say, the sixteenth to seventeen?
Sixteen.
Yeah, we'll come with our team, we'll do a brief presentation. John Chesky, by then, presumably, we will have enough time to review it, by his comments, and then we can use the rest of the area to discuss some specific things, and we'll need another hearing, so...
Okay, so the sixteenth is a Wednesday, assuming we need that second hearing.
Twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth of the town meeting.
I'm sorry?
Town meeting week might be out, so the first week of May is going to be...
Yeah, it's going to be tough. So here, we're talking, do we want it either on a Wednesday, or what, Tom, what's your schedule?
Wednesdays would be the first week of May, the seventh.
Yes, that's the first Wednesday of May.
Yeah.
Are you...
It's on Tuesday.
Jeff, are you available then as well?
What was the date of May?
May seventh, so that's the first Wednesday of May.
April sixteenth, May seventh.
Yeah. Okay, and then, so, let's assume we only need those two hearings, the sixteenth and the seventh, and then we would close presumably on the seventh. And then how much time from closing until rendering a decision?
But you have to vote, you have to kind of vote and your condition, so then it's just the issuance of the decision.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but on the seventh
Right.
we'd be discussing the language that goes into the decision.
Right.
The condition, yeah.
Right.
Assuming there's an improvement.
Right. So let's, let's do a extension of the deadline to close the hearing from April eleventh to May seventh, is what I'm hearing. Does that, does that make sense? Emily?
Yep.
You go ahead.
Yep.
Okay. You're fine with that. So then I will accept a motion to continue this hearing till April sixteenth, and also schedule it for a subsequent hearing, May seventh. And the applicant has agreed to extend the deadline to close the hearings to May seventh. The time for the April six hearing, sixteenth hearing is what?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty?
I didn't remember that. I think you like seven thirty, right?
Seven thirty always works better than seven.
Always works better than seven. Yes, okay, so we are...
Apparently, it's not going to help me with that.
So that's seven thirty, and we'll just continue, we'll set a time now for the May seventh, also at seven thirty.
I appreciate it.
So a second to the, maybe make the motion?
So, so moved, right, right.
Second motion? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
Tonight is Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. This meeting of the planning board is now called to order. First item on the agenda is Global Tower Assets LLC and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. Meeting is being held in conjunction with the Z B A. The address is two oh seven dash two two five Lincoln Street. This matter is on for status tonight, and I'm going to let the Z B A open the, open the hearing.
Right, and it's Wednesday, Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven twenty-seven P M. This is a continuation of the hearing for the zoning board of appeals on the application of Global Tower Assets LLC and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, who are the petitioners for use variance from section five E, paragraph four, dimensional variance from the setback requirements in section five E, paragraph seven D, and a special permit A two under section five E, along with a waiver of the one hundred-foot maximum height requirement under section five E, seven C of the zoning bylaw, and such other relief as necessary to construct a multi-user personal wireless service facility consisting of one hundred and twenty cell tower on land of Anchor Plaza Realty Trust, located at two oh seven to two twenty-five Lincoln Street in Residence District A. Thank you.
Sorry, could you come up to the mic and just, we're on TV tonight, so we could just speak, we're home here. Thank you.
My name is Jesse Moreno, I'm representing New Singular Wireless. As far as the update, there's been some recent submissions to the boards. There's been a revised art report responding to Mr. Graves' comments. There's been an appraisal study submitted, and we've also got a March eighteenth letter from Mr. Cheshire on the, the site plan review comments. So with that, we, since these recently came in, we're respectfully requesting a continuance to the sixteenth, Wednesday the sixteenth, to have, so that the town boards and their consultants have had a bit of time to review these, these items.
And so we're also getting an extension on the shot clock deadlines, right?
Yeah, we just have to settle on the date there, and we can do it.
Yeah, so it's not a regular meeting for you guys. We actually had initially tried to just block that timeout, April seventh meeting, because we knew you were already meeting, it's probably Land Board's turn, but the applicant's attorneys are not available that week, so we already had a Land Board meeting scheduled for the sixteenth, and now, of course, you have S U B that evening, so it would be a later hearing, if it were to be that evening.
It would be after the...
Yeah, after, it's...
Let's go and pick another day.
Unless you want to pick another day, right?
Maybe out another week.
I would prefer another week, quite frankly, rather than waiting till that...
The following week, there's school vacation week, I think, and then it's town meeting week, so we're getting a little constrained by other things. I mean, I don't know.
It'd be the Wednesday before town meeting, right? It'd be the Wednesday before town meeting.
Would be school vacation week.
But school vacation.
Yeah. It's okay with me, I can make the twenty-fourth.
The twenty-third of April?
It would be the twenty, right, twenty-third.
I could make that.
I could make it.
Is that for us, too?
It would be.
I can't, I'm in New York City.
How about the Monday now?
The Monday, the what?
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first.
Holiday.
It is.
The third Monday, third Monday of the month is a holiday.
Are we talking April or May here?
April.
April.
April. I'm trying, so we can't do the Monday. And the next week is town meeting.
Yeah, can't do the twenty-third.
You know, we could do the sixteenth if we knew what time we were going to start.
Would it allot an hour to S U B?
Yeah, I would say eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty per cell tower?
We'd need some assurance that the chair would cut the meeting off at the assigned time.
Of course, it's tight, of course, you have tight reserving.
Yeah. And since we don't even know what their plans look like...
That would be hard, Judy.
It'd be hard.
And the entire week of the seventh, it sounded like, was out for...
Yeah.
So let's look to next, right?
Sure. I think we have open dates in May, Karen, correct? We don't have anything scheduled, so we're, we could do the first Wednesday in May?
The seventh, which is our...
S U B.
But you haven't scheduled the time for S U B, so you...
Right. Yeah, that'll be...
Do you want to do the most of that?
Same way.
And you guys want to do the two nights, right? You can.
It's, it's hard.
I, I, we have a...
Yeah. No, I hear you. That week, too.
I'm not coming here three nights.
No, I understand that.
Can we go to the next Wednesday?
Sure.
And that is...
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. That work for everybody?
That's fine, May fourteenth, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right. All right. To the applicant, the planning board will also need the, the request and writing for the continuance as well, for the record, okay? I know you give one to the Z B A, but both boards need it.
Are you, are you available on the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. So from the board, I entertain a motion for a continuation to May fourteenth at seven P M.
So moved.
Second.
And just to clarify, the, the extension of the deadline to act, likewise, we continue to extend that center.
Yeah, we can, we want to do it.
Yeah, yes, perfect.
So I'd also entertain a motion that we continue the Global Tower Assets LLC application to May fourteenth, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Is there a second? All of us in favor?
Aye.
So I had a motion, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you guys have a special permit through the Land Board, or is it just like...
An A three, we have an A three.
So you need, are you, so you need a, you need them to consent to a continuance of
site plan review, and you need to agree, you need to grant a continuance of the S3, because the process is different. So you need something in writing in which they are granting you a continuance for site plan review, you have just granted them a continuance on the special permit. There's just different timeframes and processes for the two.
But everything, yeah, but everything's under the SEB shot clock, so that form actually covers all local board action.
Right. That's what I understand.
Yeah.
Do you want to do that right now, or do you...
Yes, and we should have the board chair sign it.
Yeah, and we also have an open issue, because with respect to the premises where this project is, there is, I believe, there's been a letter from the building commissioner about some outstanding violations, and we need to know what is going on.
I haven't received that letter more than I think that mine has, so that's...
Building Commissioner's right here.
Building Commissioner's right there.
Have you, have the letters gone out?
They've got to the owner.
Yeah, they've gone to the owner.
Right. And so the owner needs to communicate with you, since you are acting on his behalf. And, I mean, I can tell you, this board is not inclined to grant variances or even entertain variances where there are outstanding zoning violations that are not being addressed.
This is new activity letter that's...
I believe the violations have been ongoing. I don't know the date of the letter, but we need to make sure, and I would urge the applicant to make sure that, in fact, those are being addressed, so they don't hold up your application.
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay. All right.
All right.
So we'll continue to the May 14th, so...
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
May 4th plus May 4th plus 56? Plus 56? Brings us to June 29.
Double check.
Great.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
Okay. We're ready? Want to open? Sure. Next item on the agenda is Back River Condominium Trust and Back River Land LLC, the petitioners. Address involves a 224 Beale Street. Planning board is charged with conducting site plan review in connection with the special permit A2 to modify details of the approved plan for the Back River Townhouse development. So this matter of the planning board is called to order. It was noted at 7 o'clock that this, but I want to remind the audience, because we have some new people in, that the meeting is being recorded, we are on television tonight. Anybody who's got a speech, come up to the microphone and identify themselves.
Great, thanks. And on behalf of the zoning board of appeals, at 7:10 PM on Wednesday, March 19, 2014, and this is a hearing on the application of Back River Condominium Trust and Back River Land LLC, who are the petitioners for a special permit A2 modification under Section 5E with site plan review to be done by the planning board under Section IG and II, I1, rather, with the zoning by law and such other relief as necessary to modify details of the approved plan for the Back River Townhouse development at 224 Beale Street located in Residence E. The proposed plan revisions include the elimination of an approved sidewalk and associated crosswalk on Beale Street, replacement of slope granite curbing with a Cape Cod berm, reduction in pavement width at the end of the Back River Road, revised materials within the emergency access easement to Bear Cove Park, and installation of additional pavement at the end of the Back River Road. The petitioners also request a waiver of Section I-C, Paragraph 2 of the zoning by law, will allow more than 85% of the occupancy permits within the development to issue before all details of the approved plan are fully completed. Who's here to fill us in on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Ramsey. We appreciate the opportunity coming before you. My name is Jim Claypool, I'm a resident of Back River and a member of the Back River Condominium Trust. And our principal purpose in being the co-applicant here is to ensure that the interests of our owners are preserved and enhanced, and that nothing will happen to our development that is detrimental in our view to our living there. So with that in mind, we were the co-applicants, and we have joined with the developer in asking for relief in the minor modifications for the removal of sidewalk and the removal of granite curbing, slope granite curbing on the west side of Back River Road. On the east side, the plan's called for Cape Cod berm. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to have someone point to these areas, or...
I think that would help us, yeah. Jim, I don't know if everyone in the audience is aware of where these locations are as well.
Now, there's a, so there's a sidewalk that runs from the north side of Beale Street, across Beale Street, down Back River Road, and terminates at a fence, third of the way down Back River Road. And it's a sidewalk, which in our view does not serve any public interest or any public purpose. If you were to place 1,000 people on the north side of Beale Street, and they were to go over to the fields where they would ultimately, their ultimate destination would be, none of them would come down Back River Road on that sidewalk if it were there and go through the gate. They would all just walk over to the parking lot. It's a safety issue to come across Beale Street, in my view. They should go down to the traffic light, and that's probably where they would go. So we join with the developer in asking for the minor modification to remove the sidewalk, or rather, to eliminate the sidewalk as a condition precedent to the completion of the project for the reasons I've cited. Next to the sidewalk is the Cape Cod berm, which we have a problem with that from a maintenance standpoint. Every spring, we will have to replace all of the Cape Cod berm granite, or not Cape Cod berm, the granite sloping because of snowplows will come in and pop it loose. And here again, it serves no purpose beyond that which would be served by the Cape Cod berm, because the Cape Cod berm is on the other side of the street. So that's our principal reason there. With regard to the four feet of roadway that has been proposed, a reduction of four feet in the width of Back River Drive, it is on the far end of the drive. It serves two homes, and the proposal to reduce it from four feet to, reduce its width from four feet, that would be from 24 feet to 20 feet. The purpose of that is to provide for, and I would ask that this board, if it favorably receives that modification, make the modification subject to the placement of at least six conifer trees of firs, evergreens, that would be subject to the mutual agreement of the condominium association and developer for placement on that site. The original site plan had a building sighted within three feet of Back River Road. So the current distance from the road to the current foundation is four feet, so it's wider than the original specifications. And since that road only serves, the end of Back River Road only serves one or two homes, we feel that the reduction in size of 18 feet is sufficient, because Heron Way and Osprey Way are 18 feet. So the quid pro quo here is that the trust was willing to give up the four foot of width in return for the addition of what you see, I believe, is Section D on the modification, where we would add additional vitaminous concrete for purposes of parking. So it was to make the roads narrower, more parking at the end, because we, that's what we needed, we need parking. The last item is an item which we've had conversation with Chief Duff and the selectmen for a number of years, and we finally brought it to fruition. It's the gray area you show, which is currently blacktop. It's vitaminous concrete, and what we want to do is reduce that, eliminate it, and substitute therewith grasscrete, which permits grass to grow through the material, so that apparatus can still enter Back River on an emergency basis from a sheltery path if necessary. But there'll be green space between the end of Back River Road and sheltery path. So that's the sole purpose of that. The fire department's been in concurrence with this, the board of selectmen has endorsed it. I was down on the site with Bruce Rebaugh, and everybody's in favor of this, and I believe that the safety issues that were a concern to Captain Damstra were resolved today. So with that, Chairman Ramsey and Chairman Freeman, I will sit down unless you have any specific questions regarding it.
Let's open up to the board for questions.
I have a question, and maybe this isn't, my question is about the porches. I read something about porches not being on the affordable units, so I was curious about that, where they're located, and what the issue with that is.
Jim? Are the porches part of the condominium association's request, or is that just the developer?
There's nothing to do with it.
Okay, so that's going to be...
A difference. I don't have any at the moment.
My question is mostly about the sidewalk and the crosswalk. We repeatedly, most meetings that we have with residents of the town, have requests for sidewalks on streets in Hingham. So it's unusual to me to have a request for no sidewalk. And I know that there's a lot of parking that goes on, on Beale Street, across from the fields on busy days for the playing fields over there. And I'm concerned that without a crosswalk, I know people should walk to the traffic light, but as you know, if a kid sees a concession stand or a friend in the parking lot, they go, you know, from where they are in a straight line, they don't walk to the traffic light that's further up the road than that. So do you have a picture of the layout of Beale Street showing where that crosswalk should have gone, and how the flow of pedestrian traffic would now go without that?
Do you have a photograph? I will just respond, Judy, to a couple of things you said. The crosswalk, I don't object to, and I don't think our owners object to. The crosswalk leads to the sidewalk across Beale Street, and it serves no public purpose, because people who are parking to go to the fields would cross this, they would jaywalk, as we used to say, over to the parking lot of the fields and would walk over to the fields that way. People within Back River who have guests park in the, along the side of the road, which we've done for a long time and had no adverse effects whatsoever on the residents. So, and I don't believe, in my traveling around town, I've seen crosswalks in any of the other, sidewalks, rather, in any of the other condominium developments. And then one final thing I would say, is that the developer has placed trees in between the property line on the baseball field side, football field side, and Back River Road, and we would have to destroy substantial amounts of plantings in order to facilitate the installation of the sidewalk. So those would be our, I'm from the condominium trust perspective, that would be our problem.
Okay, I guess my is, mine is the public safety perspective of cars, lots of cars parking across Beale Street on a regular basis, and the safety of the people getting across to the fields. So we should just, if we have a good diagram of the layout of Beale Street of where all this would go...
The sidewalk to get to the fields, never. So where's that drawn?
The majority of the Back River residents have been living in Back River since 2007. The sidewalk that's proposed runs from right here, which is just after the first unit on the right-hand side, down to the street. Right now, the Back River residents, if they wanted to go into the fields or go into the shipyard, walk down here, and there's a gate right here through the fence, they go through the parking lot, and the crosswalk is at the intersection, Sergeant Terry, and Beale Street. To answer your question, Judy, opposite, this is a photograph that shows you where the crosswalk would be. Crosswalk is right in this location. The town built an island in front of where the crosswalk would be. The town has two parking spaces on Beale Street on the other side of the crosswalk. From the Back River side, the crosswalk makes no sense, because like I said, the Back River residents go through the parking lot and out to the intersection. With regard to the sidewalk, we state where the back of the sidewalk would be, so the trees Jim was referring to, all the trees that are along here that are now 25 feet high. So the way it's designed is, has been approved, there would be a five-foot sidewalk with slope granite curbing. And then this is a, this is a picture of the meadows. There's 54 units here, probably Back River and the meadows of the two communities that are closest, because the residents are in the centers of both. So it's 54 units of the meadows, it's 30-year-old community. I don't believe that's a sidewalk that you're using.
Right, I don't see one there. I know we have had residents of Linden Ponds, also condominium-style residential area in Hingham, come and say they enjoy very much the sidewalks on their property, and they would like us to put more sidewalks along Whiting Street up there, so that they can walk even further. So we also have a memo from the Board of Health requesting, this is dated March 5th, from Bruce Catman, requesting that the sidewalks be required, you know, again, to maintain this active and healthy lifestyle. So although the trees are there, they weren't on the original plan. So, you know, I'm just questioning sort of why we're going backwards on sidewalks when it feels like the town is kind of on a progressive move to include sidewalks, to promote walking, and to promote safe access to different areas of town using crosswalks.
I can tell you for certainty, too, that Hewitt's Landing, the condominium development over at the shipyard, extensive network, works all throughout, all throughout, so...
My response to that would be, maybe the Linden Ponds folks wish sidewalks. We don't want the sidewalk at Back River, because it is a sidewalk to nowhere that nobody would use, and it would destroy our landscaping substantially. So we don't see any upside to the sidewalk.
So could we talk about some kind of, since you don't see a need for the sidewalk, but I see a tremendous need for the crosswalk, sort of how we bridge that gap, would be my question. So I'll let the other people here ask questions now.
Can I just ask a connecting question? Is that not, is there a different entrance, or is that the entrance where people from the parking lot can go into Back River and then into Bear Cove Park there? Is there another entrance? Or is that the entrance that people use from the parking lot? If they park there, isn't that how they get into...
They come through that gate.
Okay, so that's another thing. That's why people access Bear Cove.
No.
No?
But they don't do that.
But I think that's what the gate's there for. I mean, I think that's one of the intentions, people can park there and walk their dogs by going through Back River.
No, the gate is there...
Someone comes around behind.
The gate is present to permit Back River residents to go to the ball fields if they wish. It's not there for public access and for a public purpose. It's not there for public access and for a public purpose.
Yes. So unfortunately, the plan that was provided is like in a vacuum with nothing around it. But the actual, if you park in the parking lot, there's actually the walkways from the back, the public walkway is from the back of the parking lot.
Some more over here.
Like pretend it's no man's land. Here's the parking lot. I'm sorry, I'm doing this upside down. But then the walkway follows the boundary. So that sidewalk would be on private property, would not be public access, it would be only for the residents. So the public access is from this parking lot that's not shown around the side.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess a couple of questions that I would have is the, I'm following on. The crosswalk's important to me. When I look at Beale Street, there is a crosswalk on the east side of Beale Street that a lot of people use. And I've noticed people crossing to the other developments along Beale Street, the Hingham Woods, for example, and then there's the development between this and Hingham Woods, where people will cross from the east side of the street to go to the entrance driveway to each of these developments. Now, in many of the situations, there's no safe zone in the middle of the street. There would be the island, but where the island has been built, oftentimes there's a curb as a barrier to prevent you from continuing across the street on that crosswalk. I'm wondering, I don't see the Beale Street plan here, but I'm from the photographs, I think I'm seeing that on this entrance, that in fact there's a, is there an island there that prevents you from crossing the street in the alignment of that crosswalk? I remember that being the case.
The town put an island there and put two parking spaces there, it's a crosswalk. Not only would it connect anything on the Back River side of the street, but it's got an island and two parking spaces.
So in looking at this, if people, if this is the public access way into Back River, wouldn't we want to have a crosswalk, I think, across Beale Street? Because I think it's a safety issue there. I'm more concerned about the crosswalk than I am about the sidewalk inside because I'm of the understanding that people walk in the roadway typically at Beale Street or the Back River, or they typically drive. Is it really the minority of people that walk or do people actually walk through?
They use the crosswalk where the light is at Sergeant Terry.
So they're coming down this gate here and going through this other piece of land and they're crossing at that crosswalk. I see. All right. So I'm not sure I'm totally resolved on this on the Beale. I had a couple of other questions relative to the width of the roadway, the reduction in the width of the roadway on Osprey and Back River and, or Heron Way, I should say. I'm looking at the queuing of the parking and the backing up and the access to the roadway. And it seems to me that the queuing length along the building at the back of the garage or the entrance way to the garage in the driveway is about 20 feet on a lot of these units.
They vary, but it's worked fantastic for seven years. Osprey and Heron are 20 feet wide.
So when the car's back up out of the driveway, because it's a one-way essentially in Osprey and/or Heron Way, when the car backs up and wants to go east, is there enough queuing room in a 20-foot width to actually do that?
Never been an issue.
That hasn't been an issue. And then also in terms of parking in this, in the area, are there two spaces off-street for each unit?
Most have four.
So most have four. So I'm looking at Building One, just the smaller one, which looks like the short driveway and that's near the intersection where the road that's down.
The I.
So Building I, sorry. Building I would have, would that have two spaces in front of the garage?
Yes.
So essentially, everything is off the street. Is there any parking happening along the roadways, guest parking?
Only if something, that large party or something like that.
So what happens in a one-way situation if there are guests and people are parking along the street and the people are queuing here? Is the 20 feet enough?
Yes, there's never been an issue with it anymore. In fact, Back River Road wider than, it shouldn't have been 20.
The other question I have is, I'm looking through a lot of the application documentation and it's quite a description about documents that haven't been submitted and the completeness of the application. And I'm wondering if in terms of as-built locations of the units relative to the setbacks, relative to the roadways, have we received that information? This is everything we have?
I guess my understanding is, I asked about that.
Okay.
I guess we did receive the proposed development. And I think we got it tonight. Is that correct, Karen? So we do have what was proposed, but I wanted to note that this was all done before we had bonded site plan review. So it was CBA-only when it was built, but we do have those plans on our table here. We just got them recently.
Do we know the?
Do we have this?
Do we have the overlay of showing the proposed against the as-built? Do we know that?
We gave you that. We know it's true. It's not really the main modification we're giving away. And we have our engineer. Basically, there's less improviser than was approved. The I building is one foot of Backsboro from the street to what was approved. You've had the drainage system inspected by the town in September 2006 by Roger Fernandez. You've had a couple hundred years.
Just one comment on that because Karen, you had mentioned that earlier today. So I called Roger quickly and he doesn't recall inspecting the site. So, you know, we just need to look a little bit further to see if there's some documentation of that.
Absolutely. Because we weren't able to start constructing units about the town, setting up all the infrastructure, adding to the fields.
Okay.
Do you have that in writing from the town? Do you have something in writing from?
I have.
Okay. The town engineer was involved with the fields but does not recall reviewing the private drainage. So if you have something, if you have something that shows that Roger Fernandez reviewed the private drainage for this site, that's what we need to say because he doesn't recall doing that. Okay, that, it needs to include because the approved plans, the cast intention making and the use of this property and then does not have it. So the plans need to have, have to match what's on the submission plans, which included the intention making. Okay, but that's going to be required under IC-2 prior to the 85 percent.
I just want to clarify, Mark Cavlick.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, thank you.
Hi, Mark Cavlick. I'm here representing Back River Land. I also stated in correspondence of March 14 that I was here on behalf of the trust, but their own attorney, Jeff Taccio, was here and I just want to make that point of clarification. So any specific legal issues with respect to the trust, Jeff will answer and I'll try to address legal issues with respect to Back River Land. I just want to clarify that issues regarding as-built plans and the 85 percent completion, I don't want to muddle that with this modification request. And I think the question came up by Mr. Tandorf-Dick about whether we have submitted the additional materials that were requested by staff. And I think we have made a good faith effort to do that. My letters of March 14 to both Ms. Wentworth and Ms. Savage addressed what we call the compilation overlay plan, which shows as-built impressions of building footprint relative to the approved plans. There's another plan that shows even the projected two buildings that will be constructed in the near term. And so we have made an effort to kind of tie all of those questions together about where the project is relative to what was approved in 2006, what are the as-built circumstances. We even had Mr. Przerski, who's here tonight, increase the items in his certification letter relative to the amount of grading change and the amount of material that might affect drainage on the property relative to what has been installed. But I don't want to muddle the fact of as-built, full as-built plan submission, which we will need to submit under the zoning bylaw with what is before you tonight. The modification requests tonight really are quite simple. The residents want it, I think they make sense. The developer would like these modifications as well. And I think it's a slightly different issue than the full as-built submission.
But Mark, the co-applicants have specifically requested really from Section IC, which requires that they prove that the development is fully complete before they receive more than 85 percent of the COs. So I don't, I mean, that is most definitely before the board this evening.
Yes, I just wanted to, I want to get to the waiver request in a second, but I just wanted to make that distinction in terms of Mr. Tandorf-Dick's request about what we submitted and this ultimate discussion about as-built plans under the waiver request. I think the waiver request is slightly different than the modification request, even though we're both here tonight to discuss the same thing. If it's an opportune time to discuss the waiver, I can get into that.
No, we can let you get it.
Bill, when you're, when the boards are done commenting on the site plan, I have to raise a legal issue with respect to the site plan changes, so I just wasn't sure where you were.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I think we just asked some questions, Tim. Thank you.
I just have a comment of perspective. I've been on the board now for a little more than 15 years and we rarely are looking at a plan after it's built and asking for sort of forgiveness of how the plan was built. And it makes it very difficult and it's not an appropriate way to go about building something. It just, it's uncomfortable and it's inappropriate. So I just want to state that, that it's unusual for us to be in this position where something is built and there will be some forgiveness being asked for, whether or not it will be granted or not, I don't know, and that, oh, we don't really want to build a sidewalk after all. It's very tough. So I just want to make that comment.
I think, I just clarify that, if the modifications are not granted, the project will be built as approved. So the sidewalk will be installed, the curb granite, the curb, the granite curbing will be installed, the width of the roadway toward the back of the site will be at 24 feet.
Right, but there are some other things where buildings have been built further back, that kind of thing, where it's very difficult to change that kind of thing.
When it's the appropriate time to discuss as-built situations versus what was approved, we will be fully prepared to defend everything that exists on the site today. I just don't think that's an appropriate discussion with respect to this modification request.
Well, I just want to state it for the record that it's unusual and not comfortable. Okay? So I'm saying it.
Part of the purpose for the sidewalk, it wasn't an approved sidewalk, it was a required sidewalk. And sidewalks benefit not only the residents who live in the development, but those who come and visit. And right now, what we're trying to do in this part of Hingham, and I think what we're seeing, is a lot more people are walking, certainly around the shipyard with the fields being redone, there's a lot more people out walking around the fields. And sidewalks are an important public amenity. And this wasn't, this wasn't an option, it was a requirement. And I'm not at all in favor of taking away a sidewalk that would allow safe entrance to a pedestrian into Back River. The alternative is for people to walk in the middle of the road. And as a matter of public safety, I think we have to be mindful of more than just the residents who live in the development.
May I respond to that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, certainly.
My unit was the first unit closed in Back River. And so I've lived there since the beginning. I've never seen anybody come to visit Back River from Beale Street. They drive their cars in, they park in the driveway of the person to whom they're visiting or they park on the road or whatever the party is, if that's what it is. But I have never seen anybody come into Back River from Beale Street to visit me or anybody else in the unit. They drive into the place where the person lives. It's actually a pretty small community. So when you talk about, Gary was mentioning a one-way street, when you have two residents, the number of times a car backs out into that road might be four times a day. So the time that an automobile is occupying the road is very rare. But I have never seen anybody enter Back River from Beale Street to visit anybody. I just wanted to make that clear.
Maybe if there's a sidewalk, you would.
Well, the other thing is Back River's a private community, private roadway where the shipyard, the public works.
Yeah, but it's not a difference in the same point of public safety.
Not a huge point. Well, I'm working to build.
Yeah, the other thing is that based on the calipers of the trees and everything, those can easily be removed with spades and relocated. So, Mr. Claypool, your description of destruction of the trees, nothing will be destroyed, they'll just be relocated.
Well, with all due respect, I do not believe it's possible to put a sidewalk in without taking those trees down. And they're 30 feet high now. They're beautiful trees. It would shock me to think that it would be a public purpose would be served by removing all those trees and putting a sidewalk in, which I can assure you, nobody will ever use because it goes nowhere. It goes to a gate that's locked.
But it also goes into your developments that people can safely walk into Back River without walking in the middle of the road.
But that doesn't happen.
Well, and now that the buildings are built at the beginning of the roadway, I think it's a different experience than the people who live towards the back. So if, you know, somebody's visiting somebody in that first unit, they may very well park on Beale Street and cross the street and go in. So, you know, at the very least, that crosswalk has to be built. I agree with Todd that moving those trees is possible. They wouldn't be wholesale destroyed. There's probably a way to keep some of them and design a more creative sidewalk there. But it was a requirement on this plan for a very good reason. And as I said, we are seeing requests weekly for more sidewalks in Hingham for more pedestrian access. And so going against that move towards pedestrian activity is counterintuitive.
Now, can I just, Mr. Todd, you might be able to answer the question. But so did the trust take a vote that they didn't want the sidewalk and the crosswalk?
Basically, the trust that's opposed, they don't, they don't want it. And it doesn't come in, it goes in front of buildings A, B, C, and then it stops. So what would happen is if somebody says, you know, walk in there, there's a sidewalk, it basically stops. Now the person, if they want to get into the back, they're left with no choice but to back, you know, turn around and go back to Beale Street or now they have to walk in the street. It's almost as though it's, you know, it's deceptive advertising. There it is. It stops, it goes nowhere. The other thing is on the trees, pretty interesting, they are rather substantial. Buildings A and B look at the fields. So if you remember what we did at the high schools, all of those neighbors got plantings. And we wanted them in certain places, right, to block the lights. Those are the lights that can form the, you know, the AD hood highs. These are the lower lights that were installed before we had all the information on the spillage, et cetera. So these are the lower lights, they don't really control the spill so much. So Building A, Building B, which isn't built yet, that's the one that's going to have the portable, it still has to be built. This is kind of their primary line of defense for the lights and the light spillage in those fields. Not intended, not required, but it really worked well. And it resonates on something that was really important to all of us when we did the site plan review for the high school. And, you know, I think here with the inferior lights, and I just mean that relative to the heights, that is perhaps more important here. And again, it's the same residents that are asking, please leave, please leave the plantings. They don't really need that sidewalk. It's interesting, I don't know if you call it a sidewalk, but as far as the trust is concerned, crosswalks or whatnot, that's really not of their concern. But this, this thing that brings people in, you know, maybe 25 percent of the length of that road and then abruptly stops, this really doesn't, it doesn't have that. And we talked about that with the committee the other night. People down in Linden Ponds, older, want to see if they can have more connectivity in sidewalks. That's something that they perceive to be a benefit. This isn't a retirement, you know, or insisted living facilities. These folks, they look at it, there are no sidewalks there today, there are no sidewalks in the back, and they like that. It works really well for them. So that's the distinction here. So, you know, apart from the developer, the people who actually live there don't think it's a good idea and don't want it.
Bill, can I, I just want to, with respect, I'm not going to speak to the sidewalk. The crosswalk has to go through the traffic committee and the Board of Selectmen. So if there is, you can't even, they can't even put in, even paint a crosswalk until traffic committee has made a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen approve it. So if there's an island in the way and there are parking spaces to remove those parking spaces, that has to go through the traffic committee and the Board of Selectmen. So, you know, I'm not saying that you don't keep it in, but if you keep it in, it's going to have to be subject to those approvals.
With that being said too, I would note, because I'm the planning board rep on the traffic committee. traffic committee, the traffic committee just recommended to the board's selectmen that we eliminate parking from the field down to almost Beale's Cove development. So that if our recommendation is adopted, there will be no parking on that side of the street.
On the opposite side.
The opposite side would still be there, it would just be that side of the street because of the island and the very narrow draw that road comes to when people are driving down that road.
Can I ask a question? I'm on sheet 1 of 1, and it's the overlay, I'm trying to understand it relative to the modification and description of the work. Item number 2 suggests reducing the pavement width from 24 feet wide to 20 feet wide, same as Osprey Way and Heron Ways, plan modification. And so, I'm trying to understand, are you talking about reducing the width of the roadway where the sidewalk is?
No, we're the spot that's here, it's right there. We saw it, we saw it, we got the [inaudible].
So you're at the end of Back River Road, the west end of Back River Road, that 100 feet or so?
There's a table up at the top. And each one of those changes apparently. And also, there might be some misunderstanding, we're not asking for forgiveness for anything. Our goal is to help the people who need it. And please, we want that.
Any more questions?
Any questions?
I'm sorry, Bill, on C, Mr. Claypool stated that he's booked to Mr. Rebaughel, which I'm sure he did. However, the majority of that portion they've labeled C is within Bearcove Park, and any changes would require a vote of the board's selectmen after recommendation by the Bearcove Park Committee. So, for C, the change is [inaudible]. So, and Mr. Rebaughel is just one member, he can have, he may feel it's a good idea, but I've been working, you know, with the town administrator on issues, all of the issues related to the park, and I am not aware that the board has been advised, or I'm not even sure that the Bearcove Park Committee has been advised of this proposed change. So that doesn't mean that the boards could not, you know, act on it, except it would have to be subject to approval of the board's selectmen as with the crosswalk.
Was there also representation on C that Mark Duff had?
Yeah, but I don't think you have anything in writing.
Do we have anything in writing?
Todd, we do have it in writing from the fire chief. And I realize that anything we're asking to be done here tonight is subject to the approval of any required board that has purview of responsibility over the park. I simply pointed out that Chief Duck and Captain Dampser were in favor of it because it was a public safety issue, so we wanted to be sure we had it.
Yeah, it's underneath. No, it was later. Just came later.
Joe, could I just read it?
Is it worth showing? Because there's a [inaudible].
You guys got a copy of it?
No one has, but we have in the file.
Fire chief's letter? I can give you mine, Todd. I think I have one, Andy, I can give them mine.
We paid that seven years ago, it should work out. We just brought in the [inaudible].
You don't want us to do that, we won't do it. And we're ready to fill these other things, we're not going to waste time, we'll finish our project. So you don't want to grant the waivers, put in the sidewalk, whatever you want. And [inaudible].
The plans that Captain Dampser reviewed, approving the [inaudible] in the Back River Road, is modified slightly from what you received, because we did the plans, that they had shortened this island to such an extent that if someone had parked a car there, emergency access vehicles going into this season area would be blocked partially. So they revised it, and Captain Dampser has since approved of this. They show how cars are able to access the driveway and emergency vehicles can access the [inaudible]. So this yellow highlighted area, it's pretty to see. The plan in front of you that they filed for the modification shortens this island up significantly, so it ended here, and it's wide back out.
So what are we voting on, Emily, then? I don't get it.
This is building J, right here. So [inaudible]. This area, there's like four driveways, so cars have parked there, so they [inaudible]. So anyway, that's the plan that Captain Dampser.
Okay, so, but the plan that's submitted, and the boards are being asked to vote on, is which plan?
Is not that one.
Is this plan as modified by that one?
So it's not this plan, it's that one?
Partially in part, for that one piece, that's like an excerpt of this plan.
Yeah, right. Item C.
Makes it confusing.
One is the plan that's going to go to the.
That plan is correct. This just identifies it more particularly by showing the cars, the plan that you have for modification.
No, it's not. It's, no, it's not.
In terms of length of the island?
But it's close.
The island's off the right way, so.
Well, we should get a plan that everybody agrees on before we vote.
We filed this with you, so it'd be a modification plan plus this if you wanted to grant that modification.
What I propose, yeah, obviously, I think we're going to need one plan.
That shows that.
I don't think that captures everything, though. So, and that's a problem. I think we need one plan that captures everything, but we can discuss that later.
Well, it sounds, I don't know what you want. If you're going to vote the modifications, fine, you're not interested in going around and doing other plans and things like that, I'm just here to bill. So I'm trying to respond to the residents, they've been here for seven years.
I understand.
I'm either going to build it or not.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
I already built all this, it's done.
What I propose is that, you're asking for a modification, though, right?
We are. We don't want to grant it, I'm all set, I'm going to build it.
Okay, but I think what I'm hearing is, you've asked for something that's a little different than on the plan, so you're going to go back and prepare new plans. Is there a problem with that?
Well, that's the plan that we prepared, that [inaudible], that's the plan we filed. This is, if you want me to modify the modification plan to show that little corner, there's no problem with that.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're asking for.
But there's no sense doing it if you're not prepared.
Correct, right. You may get some, you may get some of the modifications, you may get all of them, but we'll see how it shakes out.
Yeah. All right, so why don't we see if anybody has any last questions, and maybe we'll go to our engineer, and then we'll have maybe one or two comments for the public, and then we'll move on. We do have other items on the agenda tonight. So, are there any other questions from any board members?
No. None of the other ones, huh?
All right, so why don't we hear from Mr. Brennan, our engineer?
Welcome, sir. Susan, do you have a legal issue? No, I [inaudible].
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers. I met with Mary last week to kind of review this situation, but I haven't seen any of the [inaudible] plans that came in tonight, so I really don't have any comment at this point.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, sure. Anybody from the public like to ask a question, make a comment? Sir?
Yeah, sir, I can get it.
Actually, could you give the mic and the [inaudible]?
We're being recorded for TV tonight.
My name is Bob Versi. Have you people wrote the popular interior paper that came through, tell them what you noticed? Would you write that?
We have not, John. No, we have not. It's not really an issue that's before the board, it's not within our jurisdiction, so it's really not an issue that we focus on.
Well, there are [inaudible].
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody from the, I hear from the Bearcove Park Committee, like to speak, sir, come on up.
My name is Mark Snyder, I live at 23 Back River Road, in building N, which is right [inaudible].
We have plans.
It's underneath. I don't see where that is. So it's, I live in this unit right here, okay, so which is the end of where the [inaudible]. And I want to ask you to not require the sidewalk, for a couple reasons. And I want to ask you to separate the item of the sidewalk from crosswalk. Crosswalk, I absolutely think is essential. It's a very, it's a difficult situation that people have coming to the fields to get from the other side over to the fields, it's actually, it's pretty dangerous. And frankly, I was surprised that this crosswalk's being discussed at this point. I think it was about a year and a half ago or so, that I was in meetings where it's the steel road improvement plan was being discussed with the developer from the shipyard. And they were required to fund parking spots and improvements along Beale, which included crosswalks, and included painting for spots that hadn't been completed yet, so I don't know where that stands. But I think that, far as I'm aware, I want to understand why that work hasn't been completed. One of the issues we had, remember, this is a private neighborhood, it's not a public convenience, Back River is. We have a lot of people choosing to inappropriately park on Back River when they go to the fields. They shouldn't be parking there, it's a private way, and they park along there and make it difficult for us to get out onto the street, which is actually a very dangerous situation coming out of Back River onto the street there on Beale. My concern is that by putting a sidewalk, it's actually encouraging people to park there. It's encouraging the parents to park their cars there and, you know, for kids to go scurrying off to the fields. We have talked about putting up signs that say, private way, no residents only parking, but I would encourage you to consider not putting the sidewalk. And, Ms. Corey, I can understand why you were asking a question about this sort of forgiveness issue. And the only reason I want to comment on that was, you know, it doesn't appear that the developer, had they anticipated ever putting the sidewalk in, because the trees are there, had they anticipated, they would have planted the trees that are inappropriate, you know, distance setback in the road. If you do require the sidewalk, I would ask you to make sure that the trees and the other plantings around there are appropriate to be moved back, so that, and if they can't be moved, if they die, that the appropriate assurance is that they would be replaced with the appropriate caliber of trees. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Do we have a landscape plan that showed trees at that location originally?
You have a reduced copy in your approved plan set. It should be the back page, I believe.
Oh, in the big one?
Yes.
So the mature trees, there are six large trees listed, they're shown. Are those the mature trees that were in the photo?
We planted, we planted more than I'm showing on that plan.
I think we do have a gentleman in the back right there, he raised his hand.
Good evening, my name is Tom Burden, and I'm from the Bearcove Park Committee, and I'm kind of the vice chair. We are here to request that the developer, who is going to build, I believe, this section here, which is on Bearcove Park land, has never officially come to us and requested permission to do that. That's number one. That particular portion of land that it's in is called, quote, "the dagger," which was an exchange of land between Bearcove Park and the townhomes. That particular area was used as a detention basin, drainage basin, for the runoff from the development. At the time that this was granted, there was also a stipulation that there would be plantings in that particular area. There have been none, to date. And as a matter of fact, I think there's pictures here to denote that, that this is the way the plantings have grown up naturally, and in the first of the year, they were all moved down by representatives of either the developer or the condominium trusts. At no time did these people appear before the Bearcove Park Committee and request such permission. Back when they were granted the easement and granted the right to do that, it was an agreement signed where they would put plantings in to naturally form a natural barrier or natural buffer to the runoff. That hasn't been done yet. And frankly, if they're going to change this, we're concerned that they might change other things, too. And so, I just want to give you that particular information. If you want more pictures, I have them, and we'd be glad to give it to you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I would just like to note to the boards that the permit in the conditions section incorporates by reference, as conditions, an October 13, 2005 memo from the Bearcove Park Committee, which states, item 5, the developer will, once grading is complete, replant it with natural grasses, shrubs, and trees so as to blend in with the surrounding area. And so the evidence that's been obtained by the Bearcove Park Committee is that, contrary to that, it was completely clear-cut at the end of last year.
Wait a second.
Which is a, would be, if in fact the case, a violation of the zoning permit.
Are they out of compliance?
Yeah.
That's not, A, that's not true at all. In 2006, it was all planted, it was all approved. We can show you the plantings anytime you want to go see what we have, the engineers look at it, we can show you the trees that were all planted, you got the landscape plan. Grass was moved, no trees were planted.
All right, I think at this point, I'm going to ask ZPA their opinion, too, and the planning board, I think at this point, we definitely need our engineer to review the plans. So I think what I'm hearing tonight is, we need one plan that captures everything that's going on, opposed to the multiple plans we have.
Well, just so I understand, the only thing that regarding the modification that's slightly different is the supplementary plan regarding the area of putting the grass tree in with emergency access. If there's any opposition to that, we just won't do it. So I'm going to, I'll send you a letter, removing that from the request for authorization, because our purpose is to build this and get it finished.
But I think there's still issues with the driveway and the emergency vehicles, am I not correct?
No, there's not, no.
The issue that I have, actually, is, in this request for the sidewalk elimination, I'm looking at the landscape plan, and it shows trees and a sidewalk. So is it possible that the developer build the plan? The developer chose not to build this plan, but to build something else, and in my mind, excuse me, there are six trees along the first section of that roadway and a sidewalk.
This plan's dated 2005.
So the residents clearly want trees in that area. The neighbors across the street, as Mr. Tatcho said, benefit from the trees in that area. There are trees on the landscape plan that was supposed to have built, and there is a sidewalk, too. So asking the developer to build the plans, I don't think is unreasonable in this case.
We're happy to do that, like I said, landscaping in that area is trivial, it's on the approved plan.
We get that, okay.
So we'll put the sidewalk.
Let me just tell you where we are procedurally, okay? So the application came in on January 29. Under the timeframes for site plan review, without any request for additional information, the board has 65 days. incorporates by reference, as conditions, a October 13, 2005 memo from the Bearco Park Committee, which states, Item 5, the developer will, once grading is complete, replant it with natural grasses, shrubs, and trees so as to blend in with the surrounding area. And so the evidence that's been obtained by the Bearco Park Committee is that contrary to that, it was completely clear cut at the end of last year.
Wait a second.
Which is a, would be, if in fact the case, a violation of the zoning permit.
Are they out of compliance?
Yeah.
That's not A, that's not true at all. In 2006, it was all planted, it was all approved. We can show you the plantings anytime you want to go see what we have, the engineers look at it. We can show you the trees that are all planted. You got the landscape plan. Grass was moved, no trees were planted.
All right. I think at this point, I'm going to ask ZBA their opinion too in the planning board. I think at this point, we definitely need our, our engineer to review the plans. So I think what I'm hearing tonight is we need one plan that captures everything that's going on opposed to the multiple, multiple plans we have.
Well, we, I just want to understand, the only thing that regarding the modification that's slightly different is the, is the supplementary plan regarding the, the area of putting the grass tree in with emergency access. If there's any opposition to that, we just won't do it. So I, I'm going to, I'll send you a letter removing that from the request for modification because our purpose is to build this and get it finished.
But I, but I think there's still issues with the driveway and the emergency vehicles. Am I not correct?
No, there's not, no.
Um, the issue that I have actually is, in this request for the sidewalk elimination, I'm looking at the landscape plan, and it shows trees and a sidewalk. So is it possible that the developer build the plan? The developer chose not to build this plan but to build something else? And in my mind, excuse me, there are six trees along the first section of that roadway and a sidewalk. So...
This plan's dated 2005.
So the, the residents clearly want trees in that area. The neighbors across the street, as Mr. Tacho said, benefit from the trees in that area. There are trees on the landscape plan that was supposed to have built, and there is a sidewalk too. So asking the developer to build the plans, I don't think is, is unreasonable in this case.
We're happy to do that. Like I said, landscaping in that area is critical once on approved plans.
Right. We get that. Okay.
So we'll put the sidewalk.
Let me, let me just tell you where we are procedurally, okay? So the application came in on January 29th. Under the timeframes for site plan review, without any request for additional information, the board has 65 days, which I'm doing rough math here, is approximately April 4th to act. Now, um, the Mary Savage Dunham did send a message, I mean, a, a letter, and then a follow-up email by March 10th, which was the deadline for requesting additional information. That's this memo dated February 4th. So the question before the board is, are any of the things that Mary requested, which included a layout, an updated layout plan, which I think just came in, you guys, you have in front of you today, whether that satisfies the submissions? Because we need to figure out whether it's April 4th or if a date later than April 4th that you have to respond.
I think we get at least 15 days from, from the submission of supplemental information. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So within 60 days of them, of the initial submittal, the planning board had to notify the applicant with the 40 days of the need for supplemental information, which they've now given it to us, which we've gotten, I guess, this evening or this week. So we would have to act within 15 days or the applicant requested continuance.
Or no, right, or they would have to grant you a, an extension. So what day did this plan come in, Emily?
Uh, February 1st.
No, Monday?
It was Monday in the full size. It was one copy of Monday size, not Friday or 17th.
But the, the necessary copies that are required under the bylaw didn't arrive until Monday? Okay. So 15 days from Monday. So Monday was the 17, 14, so, well, so you, that's, that's only April 1st. So you technically have until April 4th, because that's the full 65 days. So the board either has to act before April 4th or be granted an extension by the applicant.
Susan, question I have is, and this is from a Karen, in reviewing the plans that came in, Mary has specific reference here to Item 1B, and she has reference to Item 1J, which are basically related. Have all, has all that information come in in terms of the square footage of the units and all that information that is not submitted?
It is not.
And so 1B, so we don't have 1B and we don't have...
So just to clarify, I think in part, some of the reasons staff was requesting that information is because we noticed many discrepancies between approved plans and as-built plans. It's since been pointed out to us that the approved plan set had a note that allowed at the building permit stage for those types of changes. So to the extent that those were permitted, it's perhaps, you know, that piece of it is okay. The board may still be interested in looking for some tabulation of what the approved lot coverage was versus the as-built lot coverage, just to make sure that the stormwater system was still function as designed. If you eyeballed it, it, that's likely the case, but, but it may be useful to have corroboration. The land development agreement also included caps on how much building coverage there could be and how much total habitable square footage there could be overall in the development. And we were looking for kind of an update on where they were with that. I don't know that it's necessarily relevant to the actual modification request. It is certainly something, that's an enforcement issue, that the building commissioner can keep track of under IC. I don't know that it affects the removal of the sidewalk, the removal of pavement, the, you know, changes of the setting.
So the question for the board is whether or not there's any additional information, not on the project overall, as Emily said, but that's necessary in connection with the specific request. And, you know, there's a lot of information that has just come in the last few days. So the question, I guess, for the applicants is whether or not they want to put the board in the position of having to make a decision or not, or whether they want the board to be able to digest the information and give them, grant them an extension. And it, I, I'm assuming the ZBA is not going to complete tonight, so that's really a call for the applicants as to whether or not they're going to kind of force the issue with the planning board or grant an extension to the planning board of the day.
Susan, there, there are two applicants here?
Right. Well, I'm saying the applicants.
All right. Can one applicant grant an extension and the other not?
I would...
Yes, I believe they can, to co, to co-applicants.
They're, they're, they're co-applicants. I mean, I don't, you know, I, this, this is, this is the...
Well, just to be clear, the applicants are not adversarial. They're co-applicants through applications made together.
Right.
They made that clear at the onset.
They made it together.
They made that clear at the onset, and they are working together. So it's a co-application, so I believe that they could. They're not adversarial here. So Mr. Claypool, what do you, what do you, would you like to...
I, I simply wanted to summarize from the standpoint of the condominium trust and say that we would beset you to listen to the residents who, while there may be a required sidewalk, and there is a required sidewalk, we ask you to take a look at and, and with all due respect, respect the wishes of the owners who are 100% opposed to the sidewalk for a variety of reasons that we've discussed this evening. So I just wanted to make that clear. The developer may be interested in proceeding ahead with the sidewalk. We are not interested in the developer proceeding ahead with the sidewalk. Thank you very much.
Just, just a follow-up. Was, was a poll taken among the residents so that you can represent us as 100% or...
Well, I, I, no, I would not be able to do that, but I can tell you this, that we have a small number of people, and we talk together frequently, and when the issue came up, as with other issues, I can tell you that there are certain residents who are vociferous in their views, and I've heard no one say to me, or to Bruce Tuthill, or to any others that are, that I'm aware of, that we need the sidewalk. So I think that's the important thing. There are other things that come up, as you suggest, where owners are quick to opine on whatever the matter is, but the sidewalk seems to be an issue that we're solidly opposed to for the reasons we cited. Thank you.
One, one other issue that hasn't been discussed here that's really most time in court, we, we felt we were under phasing. There's been a phasing plan that's been in the office of the zoning administrator, the zoning board of appeals office, the planning board for many, many years back from 2007. So we thought we were under phasing, and that gets into this issue of the 85%, but what part of our application was, is the application 85%. We're ready when the asphalt plants open up to put the top coat down, but we're in agreement with the residents that we would prefer not to do that until July 29th, after the foundations are completed for the, for the three main buildings, the framing's completed for the three main buildings, and the sheet blocks done, so the heavy equipment's done. That's the more urgent thing that we need if we, if the zoning board appeals, I guess that is just the zoning board appeals, if they granted us that modification, that's really the time we issue that will be seen here. Thank you.
Well, I guess I get back to my initial question. Are we, are we, is the applicant going to grant the board a continuance?
Well, it depends on how much time. We want, everybody wants to finish the project.
Sure, we want to finish it too.
We'd like you to grant the waiver, so if, we certainly could grant an extension till, till the, your meeting in April, April 15th, something, something like that would be helpful.
Well, I mean, the, the site plan review is done in conjunction with the special permit A2. The ZBA is going to extend to whenever it fits their... If the planning board was to meet prior to that, you still wouldn't have whatever approvals you need because you have to wait for the zoning board of appeals, and then you have to wait for a 20-day appeal period. So I think it's really more, when's the ZBA going to continue this until? And then it would be reasonable to say, just do it all again on, you know, right before then, the planning board gets done, right before then, or at the same time.
Maybe there could be a straw poll here, because although Jim and I would like to see this resolved and hopefully resolved favorably, we don't want Chinese water torture here if there's no way that the boards are going to be inclined to grant the modifications and would rather just get on with finishing the project and building it.
I don't recommend straw polls. I think the boards vote when they're ready to vote.
I would like to make one further comment on the paving, which I didn't address earlier. And that is, if the board in its wisdom requires the paving to be done now or in the very near future, then with the trucks coming in to finish the construction, the caulked verm will clearly be substantially damaged, and that will be detrimental to all of the owners and will require repair. And anytime you repair asphalt, as you know, it's, it's got a scar on it. So it seems to me the, the relief that is being sought this evening is to extend the paving requirement maybe 30 or 60 days, not eight months or a year, but just a little period of time so we can get those construction trucks out of there and then pave the road and have it look nice after it's finished. That's, that's the reason for it.
Okay. All right. I think at this point, we need to address the matter at hand of, we're going to have a continuance or not. So Susan, Susan made a good point about what the ZBA wants to do with it, and then I think we need to, it sounds to me like the applicant is inclined to, to work with us on a continuance, so.
Unfortunately, as we discussed in terms of scheduling and continuance, we're already in the, it's May, when we can next meet together at a hearing that we have time, time available. We meet May, May 14th, and it would be after SCV.
I mean, the planning board could resolve its issues at one of its own meetings, and now they have to meet with you again.
That's right. Because we'll, we'll incorporate the site plan review into our...
You could certainly have another meeting on planning plans in the next 20 days. You could do something earlier than, if you wanted to put those two things together. Not kind of just...
So what do we...
Karen, how are we looking for dates?
We could do April 7th, November 8th, anyways.
That work, everybody?
Yep. Can we request, you know, if the applicant meet with the Bearco Park Committee to resolve this dagger issue prior to that meeting?
And with the board of selectmen and the town engineer to talk about the crosswalk.
And the board of selectmen and the town engineer to talk about the crosswalk.
Would the planning board send a letter to both those agencies saying there's a designed crosswalk that's being blocked by violent...
They, they understand that the town engineer...
Well, I think you need to make that direction because we're willing to say, you're not going to grant the waiver, but we're ready to build it, but we can't build something that's being blocked.
The, the town engineer is aware that there's a, he offered to meet with your engineer already to discuss how the crosswalk would go through.
We're not interested in building it somewhere else. We'll either build it the way it's, we're going to either build approved plan or not build approved plan, so.
Bill, do you know when the traffic committee, is there, are they scheduled, are you scheduled...
Traffic committee meets generally the last Wednesday of each month.
So you would then be meeting with the traffic committee before April 7th?
That's correct. We should be meeting probably, I believe it's next week or the weekend.
So it probably makes sense to get that, this on the agenda.
Maybe Karen, could you send an, an action item to Sergeant Durth and have him put on the agenda?
Sure.
Just one more item that I would like to ask. Since we're doing the compiled plan, the porch that's shown on the south end of Building J here, how much of that intrudes into the setback? What's the square footage of the intrusion into the setback? Leave this porch right here, very southern end of Building J. It's shown, it's shown as being into the setback. Under the projection section of bylaw, you allow it for a square feet. Yeah, yeah. If it's more than that, we just want to know. Okay. So if you just get the, you know, the, you know, the area that's in the projection, just so we have that on the way.
That's J 4.
Okay. Okay. So have you got a...
Mr. Stacey, did you have any questions about what we're asking you to do between now and, and...
No, but we do have one thing we ask the zoning board of appeals in indulgence, if this issue of the modification could be dealt with tonight regarding the waiver that, excuse me, it could separate the modifications from the waiver that we're asking for regarding the application, so we could delay the paving as, as the most urgent course.
Oh, okay.
Really not a need to wait for that.
All right. So before, before we go to that, do, do we have an extension granted by the co-applicants of site plan, the deadline for site plan review until April 7th, 2014? Has that been granted by the co-applicants?
Yes.
Counsel, could you draft that? Could you draft a motion right now? Frankly, not, thank you.
Yeah, a piece of paper, by the way.
You can do it longhand, yeah, just, we need it tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So you've got your extension. We've got the request before we vote on the, I guess, we need the extension.
No.
We don't, we don't.
You don't, you just need a continuance.
Right, we need a continuance.
But they would like to reveal the, the, the...
Issue the waiver.
I, I would, what happened is there was a request, and the, the picture is here. There was a request by the applicant that the building commissioner make a finding with respect to whether or not this was a phased project that's defined under the bylaw, but given that this hearing was so close to the request, he recommended deferring to the board. And I think Emily has given you a summary of what the bylaws, section, right, do they have? So that's the question. Because it's a question of, is it 85% of the entire project or is it 85% of each little building? Which is how it's phased for condominium purposes.
Do we need to even resolve that if we're going to say, don't pave for, for 60 million of the amount of time it's...
Well, the, the issue is if it's at 85, if it's at 85% of the whole project, I mean, based on the last letter of micro, if they can only get one more certificate of occupancy before all other sites work, not just paving, but all other site work must be completed.
Right. But as I understand it, they're only interested in a waiver with, with respect to the paving?
Well, no, the application of the 85% kick in July 30th is what we're asking.
The main reason for which is the final coat, but there are other issues with that too. And I agree with your statement that that whole discussion, which would take probably another 20 minutes or a half an hour to get through, is not relevant if you're inclined to grant the waiver as requested.
But I'd like to know, what, what other work? All I've heard is paving.
Well, it's, it's paving, which includes the final setting of the manhole covers. It includes, in some instances, preparation. Actually, Jim could probably speak to it.
The crosswalk or sidewalk, we discussed that earlier, and the paving.
And then all the ones that they're going...
And, and the, and I believe as-built plans are part of that as well.
This work, if this work gets done, I mean, it's, it's everything. I don't know. Emily, have you had a chance with Mike to determine the tolls?
Susan, if I, the, the pavement, this area here really is part of the pavement, reducing the pavement, so if we get a waiver, that is, we're in relationship to pavement, sidewalk and the crosswalk. We can then have the building inspector issue permits till we get the granted extension and work out whether we get the opportunity to...
There's still the four occupancy permits that outstanding after July 30th.
Four versus seven, is that...
Yes.
So what's the percentage? So maybe it's just a waiver to, well, can you even grant a waiver, I guess, is the first question? And then the next question is, are, is it a full waiver or just saying a change in the percentage? So they're asking for an entire waiver of that section, but they're saying there's still going to be four certificate of occupancy outstanding, and maybe the waiver should be to increase the percentage so that there's still some CMOs, which are the hammer that makes sure the work gets done and avoid it gets old.
And we'd be in agreement with that.
Is, is there any reason we'd be looking for financial set aside or performance costs?
I think that that is a very difficult mechanism to use, so I think it's preferable to use certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
I agree. I agree with that. And I wouldn't want to unnecessarily hold up certificates of occupancy and penalize the buyers of the units from having to extend their rental or whatever their arrangements are.
Right.
An additional few months is unfair.
Right. But the, the purpose of that bylaw section, which might be worth looking at over the next year to see if needs to be tweaked in any sort of way. Like, for example, a, some sort of change regarding to pavement might be one that makes sense, but, but the purpose of it is actually to protect the residents of these communities so that a developer doesn't sell everything off and disappear and leave the homeowners in the lurch.
Correct.
So that, I mean, the purpose is, it's a good purpose of the, but whether in practice it's always, if it works exactly the way it's drafted is the question.
I would be amenable to we were, the paving requirement.
But whether in practice, if it works exactly the way it's drafted is the question.
I would be amenable to a waiver of paving requirement to that thing. They're not as interested in the paving requirement.
What is, what would four units level percentage of that be? How many units are there altogether? Four or five? All right, do the math.
It's a little over ninety percent.
Yeah.
Equals forty-one divided by forty-five is ninety-one point one one percent.
So ninety-one percent. So not more than ninety-one percent of the certificates of occupancies could be issued until the work is done.
Did you just say the four because it's ninety-one point one, ninety-one point one?
How many of those are affordable?
One.
There's seven homes left in the middle of that river, so it'll be timed to July twenty-ninth, because there'll be four occupancy permits left. One of those will be affordable, three of those will be markery. So three markery will work three million dollars.
I mean, however you want to word it. I mean, bylaw speaks to percentages, so we just keep it consistent. It's no magic, so I mean, however you're comfortable.
Well, as a co-applicant, I think that Susan hit on something that would satisfy this particular situation by increasing the percent to ninety-two percent or whatever the appropriate number is, that would then give the relief that we seek and at the same time keep it consistent with the percent, which subsequently I think the planning board or some such authority needs to review that bylaw to begin with, to clarify the phasing versus the other. So the ninety-two percent, if that's the correct percent, would satisfy us to delay the paving until July first, July thirtieth.
Yeah, so there's been calculating that ninety-one point five percent would work as a percentage.
Yeah, I mean, if you said ninety-two percent, that would get them to forty-one units.
Right.
I mean, I just like the symmetry of the way the bylaw does it.
Yep. And so your preliminary question is whether or not we have the authority even to alter that percentage. Where is it in the bylaw?
I can speak to that a little bit. One way of approaching this with respect to authority is to recognize that we have been moving along with phasing as a measure for COs all along. So I think if you entwined this reasoning of the delay with the concept that we've been phasing all along, I think that you probably will have footing for authority.
I don't think we're comfortable with it. There's a specific finding for phasing that was required under Section 4E that the permit does not include, so I think that's a longer discussion.
It will be ninety-two percent. Round out, it's ninety-eight, one, six, six, seven.
Oh, right, ninety-two.
We're fine with either, just whatever in line with our...
Okay.
Excuse me, I would have to exclude the affordable though, so that's not part of those that are left yet.
Well, that's why we asked how many are, how many are on the remaining four.
There would be four left, only one would be...
The only one would be a four.
Right, so one of the four, but I think...
Well, are they all going to be in one building? So that's the other concern. You're going to end up with, what if that last building is...
Can we see, can you point out on the plan, the seven homes that are at issue right now and where the affordable homes are?
There's the affordable unit here in the middle of B building, which is closer to the front. And that Y building has two units, G building has three. So it's three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
He said seven, so...
Seven markery, one affordable.
Seven markery, one affordable, which is eight units. So these four, one, two, three, and one left of this unit of occupancy would be held.
Wait, which ones would be held?
These three would be affordable.
Yeah.
This market, this market, one of these markets would be available. So three markery, one affordable. That would allow us to bring the construction to the front of the property and then properly pay and make sure we have a more heavy construction in the rear.
And so the more valuable buildings at the back end, those are the ones you want to do first? You want to release first?
We'll be leaving one of those occupancies as part of the four.
Forty building.
Yeah, the building needs so we can get the heavy construction to the front of the site. So this will be brought to Sheet Rock, not occupancy, and then we'll be able to pay because we'll have these to Sheet Rock and be able to leave the site and give us all time to work on the sidewalk and the crosswalk issues.
So it would seem to me that what we are doing is increasing the percentage based upon a particular staging of work that's being represented. And the percentage is increased with the additional proviso that it include no more than one affordable unit for purposes of the work.
I think there's only one left.
There's only one left.
Are there only one left?
Yes, we built and sold four affordable units already.
I mean, I think as long as you have... I'd be concerned if the only thing that was left was this building with the three because there's the potential they might never get built. But if they have one built that they can't sell because you're holding up the C O, at least you know that work will be done. It still doesn't guarantee that this building will ever get built, but at least you know all the site work would be completed. And even if you did the eighty-five percent, just held them to that, there's no guarantee the final building ever gets built, so...
I'm comfortable going with the ninety-two percent.
That's enough. Yep. Okay.
So...
The mechanism for doing that.
Can you suggest a resolution?
I suggest that the board take the action the board feels is appropriate and...
What's the motion?
But is that part of the special permit A two application or is it not a part of it?
Yeah, see, that's the problem. I don't see how you can make a motion on a piece, one piece of it. Isn't it one application that requests all of this relatedly?
This particular part of the special permit relief was not part of the site plan application. The modifications...
Right, but the thing is, in order, I'm sorry, interrupt. In order to get to the site plan review, you're filing for a modification to the A two special permit. Because the way it works in Hangum is, it's not a special, site plan review is not a standard permit. It's in association with the special permit. So anything, whether the planning board acts, doesn't act, whatever, none of it's effective until the ZBA makes its vote on the entire thing.
Correct.
They can't just vote one part of an application.
But we're granting a waiver with respect to the modifications. My point was that the specific request regarding the waiver with respect to the eighty-five completion rate was not part of the site plan request. Does not need planning board approval. Only affects the special permit.
Right.
Okay.
You're prowling me though, right Joe?
You, they have to, they have to, after the planning board votes, they still need to vote. I mean, you don't do a site plan modification in a vacuum unless it's a project that does not require, unless it's an adequate project.
Right.
And it's tied to the building permit.
Right.
So in this case, the modification, even though you're saying it's not part of site plan review and that's true...
There's the two modifications.
It's part of the special permit.
Right.
So...
I'm still not following you because the waiver request is a subset of the special permit application.
The special permit requires site plan review and they can't act on the special permit A two. Our bylaw does not allow them to act on a special permit A two until the planning board has issued its site plan approval.
See, I, the, yeah, the waiver request is not part of what we put in the site plan application.
It's part of the special permit.
It's part of the special permit.
Yeah, the site plan application is a part of the, you're looking at it backwards. You file a special permit A two application or modification and it's got this tail that's called...
Yeah.
And it's got a tail that's called site plan review. And the zoning board appeals is prohibited from voting until sixty-five days have elapsed or the planning board has made a decision.
Are you saying that this waiver request also requires a planning board vote?
No, no, no.
Okay, so then I still don't understand. If we had submitted a standalone application for the waiver, the zoning board would be empowered to grant that waiver. And we're asking you to do that.
But you didn't file it.
No, and you can't file the waiver. You could have filed a variance from Section IC, but you can't file a waiver under the special permit A two without also tying it...
So you're saying, so you're saying it does need planning board, a planning board vote?
Nope.
You would have needed a waiver from the planning board. You would have filed the application.
If you safely...
Wait, let me, let me... You would have filed an application for a special permit A two modification, right, with respect to dis provision. At that point, the application would go over the planning board and the planning board would say, "You know what? This doesn't have anything to do with the site plan," or maybe, assuming they said that, "We're waiving site plan review." Once they waive site plan review, then they can vote. Everything has to go with an A two, it has to go to the planning board before they can act.
Well, the planning board is here, we've made the presentation. We would request that they waive further site plan review with respect to this particular issue so that the board can vote tonight. I don't see why we can't work this out with the two boards here in a joint hearing.
Is there some way to separate one piece from the application to have them leave that piece?
No, it's all, because it was all applied for at the same time.
Yeah. Was it...
I understand now as explained, so I guess the question is, planning board here, it may say, "We would grant an exception on the site plan review for that one piece."
But even though they, if they were to grant a waiver with respect to that one piece, we cannot vote piecemeal on an application. And because this is a unified application, we can only vote on the application. That's the procedural hurdle. Let's look at it the other way. If they proceed and don't pave and want to get the additional COs, that would go to the building department. And the question is, what is the building department going to do?
Can I ask a question with regard to that?
Well, when do you need the COs? Can I just ask you that, Tom? When do you expect that you'll be ready to apply for the COs? I guess that's the...
In June is the answer.
Okay, then...
You've got plenty of time.
Then what's the problem?
Well, here's what the problem is. We want to make sure of what we're building and the issue is the pavement. What I thought the simplest solution would be one or two things. The way that I look at it is this request for modification is regarding the application provision of the zoning bylaw. It doesn't have anything to do with the special permit. It has to do with the section of the bylaw that we cited relative to the eighty-five percent. I would think there's two ways that you could address that. You could either say that you're going to grant the modification for ninety-two percent or you could ask, ask the zoning enforcement officer for his opinion and interpret that perhaps the plan that shows the, what we believe shows phasing, you could get to the ninety-two percent by saying the phasing's...
But I'm confused now. You don't need a C O until June? It's mid-March, well, we'll just have another hearing. I don't get it. I'm sorry.
I mean, in all likelihood, we'll get the site plan review on April seventh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
If they do, if they do the site plan review on April seventh and you guys stick these guys on at whatever, nine o'clock on the sixteenth, and then the decision gets issued as quickly as, you know, reasonably possible, the twenty days run, you're at the middle of May.
Yeah.
Before they even need to apply for a C O.
I don't understand the urgency.
We need to build everything before we can apply for the C O. Each, all building needs to be all inspected, needs to write his report, we need to prove it. That's why we need all this time.
But they're just, they're going to extend, but they're going to vote on the sixteen in all likelihood to make it to the ninety-two percent, in which case he doesn't have to write any report.
Well, if that's true, let me understand this. I thought we granted extensions of the planning board. When's the zoning board appeals going to...
Well, we're going to talk about a continuance. We haven't voted on that yet, so...
Right, but that, but we're supposing something and I don't know the answer to. If you're meeting April, then what you're saying is correct. But remember, this issue comes up that we have to build it all, it has to be inspected, that's why, because I need to...
May I just say that it's very hard for us, for instance, to review a project appropriately when our engineer hasn't had time to review it because plans came in tonight.
We're not going to do anything tonight.
So there's some due diligence on your part to make sure things are in time, in on time, so we can review it appropriately.
We're not going to do anything tonight, yeah.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, in the future, we need to get things in a timely manner so we can review them.
So let's talk about our meeting. When do we want to continue to?
So we are meeting again on the, on April sixteenth with SCB?
It's Town Road SCB.
So this, I think we should do this...
It's going to be like nine o'clock?
Yeah. Okay, so...
We're building these homes, they're under contract.
Understand.
So we would continue this till the sixteenth?
Sixteenth of April at nine P M.
At nine P M. And, but I think as part of that, we should identify what information we need and make the request that it be sent in at least a week before so that...
And now I'm just, I'm going to make a request on behalf of the selectmen that the issue with respect to this, whether or not there is a violation of that condition in connection with the plantings be addressed or between now and the sixteenth.
The plantings on the dagger?
In the dagger, with the Barracose, through the Barracose Park Committee who report to the board of selectmen.
Okay. Is it...
Mr. Burbank, can you...
Having things come in the night of the hearing...
He left just a little bit ago.
Wastes a lot of our time. So could we make, could we agree that that, there'll be a resolution of that issue a week prior or something like that?
Yeah, I'm not sure when the Barracose Park Committee is meeting, although I think it's fairly flexible. So I think if Mr. Hayes didn't want to contact Mr. Burbank, who unfortunately has left, I'm sure that the committee will try to accommodate the schedule.
Maybe rather than put a request into things, put a requirement in that if not, then it'll be continued again?
Yep.
Well, what if the Barracose Park Committee's not meeting? I mean, that's not under our control. It's not geared at us.
When is the sixteenth? It's like almost a month away.
A month away.
I can't promise because I'm not on the committee. I think that they'll...
I want to ask them right now when you'd like to meet. I mean, I don't have a problem doing it. You can't kind of like meet if a board can't meet unless a fair agenda's hold or trying to meet people. I don't know. We'll meet them tomorrow.
You know what? I think their meetings are actually pre-scheduled on, like, they meet the same time all, every month.
Beginning of April.
So, do you know, John?
Beginning of April.
Beginning of April, okay, thank you.
Doesn't the issue raised by the Barracose Park Committee relate to an enforcement issue which can be dealt with after the eighty-five percent threshold or ninety-two percent threshold?
If you're not in compliance and coming in and looking for relief, we don't, we don't have to believe.
But we, but you see, we think we are in compliance. I don't think it's been proven that we're not in compliance and what has been proposed with respect to the modification actually changes blacktop that exists today to something other than the blacktop.
We're talking about the eighty-five, ninety-two percent. You're giving them relief on that.
Right. Right, but they're also, they're also saying that, that in a different part of that, of that dagger, there were things that we're supposed to have done as conditions of the permit that weren't done. Obviously, there is a question and that we want that question resolved before our next hearing.
This is two thousand and six, we finished all this. This isn't something that just happened. Two thousand and six, we planned it all this. Two thousand and six, that was all seeded and planted. Everyone knows that. They have photographs.
Tom, it has to be maintained in that condition and we have photographic evidence that it was in that condition last summer and that by November, December of this past year, it was clear cut. So that, I didn't witness it, but there's photographic evidence. So that needs to be resolved.
Absolutely not true. Jim went into the Barracose Park Committee, the former Barracose Park Committee went there. There was absolutely not one single tree cut down. We mowed it to maintain the drainage.
I'm just going to note, we do have other items on the... Maybe we can just move on and address that issue later.
It's an obligation Barracose Park Committee has represented to the town administrator that they believe cuttings happened that were inappropriate. So I'm just conveying...
Make the best effort to be...
Because Mr. Burbank's not here, I'm just conveying a message that I was in a meeting with Mr. Burbank and Mr. Alexiadis and this information was provided to the town administrator in my presence.
So I move that we continue the hearing till the sixteenth of April at nine P M. There's a motion, second?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll second it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Thanks, folks. We do have a lot on our plate. We've got Lido, we've still got three years. Oh, we have another one with you. Do we have two more? We have one more.
Oh, now we are?
Don't we have? No. We have two.
Sorry, folks, I could ask you to take that into the hallway. We have, believe it or not, three more hearings to get through tonight, so thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, let's, let's get the meeting back to order. Again, if you have a conversation, please move aside. The next item on the agenda is Lido Juice Inc. Applicants are Stephen Johnson and Allison Gregory. This is at 60 South Street. The planning board is charged tonight with site plan review in connection with a special permit A2, I'm sorry, and special permit A3.
And on behalf of the zoning board appeals, it's Wednesday, March 19th at approximately 9:17 PM. This is an application, is a hearing on the application of Lido Juice Incorporated, 103 Ripley Road, Cohasset. Stephen Johnson, 226 Powder Point Avenue, Duxbury, and Allison Gregory, 36 Stockbridge Street, of Cohasset, who are the petitioners for a special permit A2 under section 3-A, paragraphs 4.9A and 4.9D in the zoning bylaw, and such other relief is necessary to operate a 15-seat sit-down takeout juice bar at 60 South Street. Business district A in the downtown Hangham Overlake District, along with site plan review will be done by the planning board. Apologies for the lateness of the hour. You want to fill us in on your plans?
Sure. I'm Stephen Johnson, this is Allison Gregory. We are-
Yeah, we're being recorded, so we're good to get up. And I should just say one more thing. In accordance with the state open meeting law-
Sorry?
In accordance with the open meeting law, the state open meeting law, we are recording.
Okay. Thank you. Sometimes I can't hear too well. So I'm Stephen Johnson, this is Allison Gregory. We are owners of Lido Juice Bar in Cohasset. We opened in Cohasset September 7th of 2012. It's a great place to sort of test the, test the market for something that we consider as a New York-California-style juice bar. It's very open kitchen. We use as much fresh, well, we use fresh produce for our, specifically green juices. We do smoothies. Sometimes we're using organic produce. I don't know if anybody's been in to the juice bar. I think I recognize you, yeah.
I am.
Okay, great. So anyway, we had a great response in Cohasset, and a lot of our customers are from Hangham as well, and started suggesting we ought to be doing this in Hangham. We've also had a lot of people suggest we ought to be doing this in Duxbury, and Dover, and, you know, Hembroke, and Situate, and whatnot. So I think we have a good thing going here, and with that type of response from, you know, residents of Hangham, we started looking into it, and the opportunity came up at 60 South Street. Formerly, it was a gift shop called Sorchet. They vacated that about two months ago, I'd say, and it looks, you know, we went over there and took a look, and we think it's going to, it will work for what we're doing. It's quite low impact, what we do. It's produce, it's fruit, it's blunders, and industrial juicers, which, too easy. Yeah, so. We don't have people coming in and lingering around for a long time, and I think that's just, maybe it's the nature of our product, or it's the nature of how we set it up. It's not like a coffee shop where we encourage people, we're not discouraging people to come in and sit around for a long time. We only have four seats in Cohasset. We have the opportunity to put a few cafe tables outside, you know, sort of along the street, on a wooden boardwalk, I guess. We haven't taken that, taken ourselves up on that opportunity. But sometimes people will come in and sit there for a while. But I think everybody's lifestyle is so quick and fast, it's like grab and go. We want to be in and out, and I'm on to the next thing, picking up my good hero there or whatever. But we have, our customers are anywhere between the ages of 2, 5, when you get into 10, and of course, you know, 20-somethings, college kids when they come back, yoga moms, they are kind of, you know, we would say, we see a lot of, we have a lot of regulars that are in every single day. So that's, that's basically our business. Allison might put it in a different way.
Probably.
And so, this is what we're doing, we're planning to do in Hangham. We think it would be a good contribution to downtown.
Any questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One, it's just Lido, after the Greek mother of Artemis and Apollo?
Do you want to answer this? I mean, I can answer this.
Or is it Lido Beach?
It's Lido Beach. Yeah. Sorry.
There's a mythological character named Lido.
Always a school teacher.
You always learn something here.
I was waiting for boss scags.
Right. That's the other one.
All right, there looks like there's a cafe table right in front of the White Magdalena. So those doors will now be closed, you can't zip in. I mean, you used to be able to go from Zuzu's into White Magdalena, no longer?
Right, well, there's, there are no door, there's no doors there. It's actually an open pass-through.
Just an opening, yeah.
And we've talked with Lisa from White Magdalena. She's one of our customers as well, so.
Oh, in Cohasset?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She comes over to Cohasset. We're thinking of putting some French doors, some sort of vintage French doors. We travel down to New Bedford and look at the New England Architectural Antiques Place. That might be one option. We could just wall it, wall it in if we wanted to, but I think it would be nice for both stores to be able to at least see through, potentially pass through through a door. I don't think that would happen too often. It depends on how it pans out.
Is there a noise issue for Lisa?
For Lisa, there's not a noise issue. She's familiar with, with, you know, we've got blunders. Those blunders can have mufflers if it's necessary. We don't, we don't now. We've got an ad executive who's upstairs, and it's not bothering him. And then our industrial juicers are quieter than actually the blunders.
All right, what is the customer grab and go? What's that mean?
So grab and go is what you'd see in most delis, a lot of, you know, quick-serve restaurants. It's a refrigerator, not this tall.
Oh, and you can just-
Could be smaller than that.
They're pre-made ones.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's really my other question.
I have a whole stack of, I've got our menu, I've got a couple photographs of what our current shish bar looks like.
Typically, our applicants for food establishments bring samples, so.
Oh, really? We do a road show, we could have brought the whole area.
We've had cupcakes and all kinds of-
Do you serve liquor?
I do have a, I do have two questions. One is, as a different use than what was there, it seems like the use of the dumpster will be somewhat different than what Sorchet, you know, Sorchet used a dumpster for packing materials, and this is for organic waste. I don't know if it's waste, but what do you do, what are you doing about that?
We have, our waste removal company is called EOMS. They take care of all our trash. We've got a regular trash dumpster. It's a small, like a two cubic yard or something. And I think that's picked up, we generate very little, little amounts of actual trash.
Right.
We have, we've got actual compost bins, because we go through, we end up with a lot of compost. We call it compost, it's not actually compost until it's composted. So we have bins specifically designated for that. Then we also have-
The food waste.
Bins, or they call them totes, for single-stream recyclables. So that's for, you know, well-
So where will it go outside, and where will it go? And is it different than what's outside right now?
If I'm looking at what's outside right now, it's just a container that I believe has trash barrels, and I don't think, I don't believe Sorchet ever had a formal trash removal. However, if I go out the back door and out a little bit into what is a more larger parking lot, it looks like it's the back of Caldwell Banker and Bruno Awakenings, there's some formal dumpsters out there and that, but those are, those are the big, biggies. We're like smaller containers that are picked up, you know, more frequently if needed. We don't know how much trash we're going to generate necessarily. We can, we can have a concept of it based on what we're doing in Cohasset. So we'd, there'd be a lineup of smaller totes that are on wheels that can get to the street.
Do they fit against the back of that building?
Yeah.
They do. I'm just looking at the aerial view. So it looks like there's kind of a paved grassy area back here. This is that big-
Yeah, okay, so.
I think this is you.
Where am I?
In the green.
So yes, just along this area right here, and there's a little area as well along there.
So the trucks, the, I'm just wondering where the guys who would be picking up the stuff, they'd come into this parking lot?
I don't know, I don't believe there's access to that. There's a, there's smaller, they could come in there, they could come up along here as well.
Or they could come early in the morning and just pull the, yeah. So I think having the, because, because there is no access to the back of that building by truck, I think having some kind of pickup hours for the dumpster would be helpful to the neighbors down there, so the truck doesn't, if there's no parking, they're not blocked.
Sure. Well, and it's not, it's kind of unsightly to have a dump, you know, a big disposal truck coming.
Yeah, so if you could arrange something, and maybe the ZBA can do a little time.
That's always been an issue in the square, that.
Yeah.
Yes. You know, we don't want supplies coming in at very early in the morning and disturbing the neighbors.
There is actually a loading zone on Central Street-
Right.
Dedicated for trucks, I think until noon, next to Square Cafe. So whatever the time is on that sign would be a great time to-
For loading.
For type deliveries, so they could park there if the, if participation. But my second question, that was a dumpster, is, so as a new use going in here with seats, there's a parking change associated with the use, and are we doing a parking determination? Yes, okay. So you had said that there would be 15 seats?
Well, I believe that as a takeout, the designated number of seats is 15. Is that correct?
Takeout, we have much higher numbers.
I believe you maybe selected that based on the square footage of the space. Retail would require five spaces per thousand square feet, where it uses three, one space for three seats.
Right, and, but since we've got over 1,000 square feet, we can go for the 15 seats.
Yeah, so it would be a wash at 15 seats.
Yes.
But I understood that you were never actually going to have that many.
Well, we were just counting, like I said, we have four now in Cohasset. And Cohasset, of course, is a little different the way that it works, but we'll never get to 15 seats there because there's basically-
11.
11 inside. And, and maybe eventually some, something outside, you know, out front.
In terms of the activity, it's, foot traffic is the basis of the, of the customer base in the business. But the turnover is very quick. People come in, they don't sit necessarily like a coffee shop or something, sit for 10 or 15 minutes. They come in quickly, it's more of a takeout, they grab the drink and then they go. The question is, is this, in Cohasset, is this a destination place where you have a lot of trips, or is this something that people are doing because they're downtown anyway, and they're walking, and so they're walking over to your, to your store? Trying to figure out if it's a destination, and the frequency compared to retail is much higher, even though the seat, the parking space per seat requirement is more static. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, what's the activity there? What's the turnover? Is it very quick?
It really depends on the customer and what their, what their own habits are. I mean, if I put it into a percentage thing, I'd say 70, 70% of people are in and out quickly. Every once in a while, somebody who's, they've decided to meet there, and they sit there for maybe an hour and a half. It's a very pleasant place to sit. And there's a lot to watch going on.
It depends if you have Wi-Fi.
Well, that, we do have Wi-Fi, we do. But they don't, not taking necessarily, we don't advertise that we've got Wi-Fi. They're not taking, like I say, we don't necessarily want people lingering around for a long period of time, but necessarily don't care either. So people, our customers, oh, I know, I was going to say, is, from interviewing a lot of people who are coming over from Hangham, and when we're looking for different spaces, you know, we get, we get, oh, you know, that's a great space, or, oh, I don't know about that, I don't know about that over there, you know, no, it's not as good as there. When we suddenly landed on this one spot, a customer, a couple of customers who are, you know, moms, they've got three or four kids, this is great, because I park in one spot, I don't want to get out, I don't want to, you know, get back in the car and go drive and park somewhere else again. I want to, I'm going to hit the post office, I'm going to go into Winston Flowers, I'm going to go to, you know, my kid's doing karate lessons or whatever, preschool at the community center, I'm going to go around. So that seems to be the nature of how they're talking about it. I said, well, what about the parking? Because we don't, you know, we want people avoiding us because they can't find a parking spot. And then, of course, well, there's that lot behind here, there's this, there's that, and I don't, you know, I don't know too much about the, you know, workings of where everybody's parked, but it seems to me that they're saying that it's not a challenge to do what they're wanting to do. So in destination, yeah, we've got people coming from, most recently, you know, West Roxbury, to see what we're all about. Because really, we're the only ones doing what we're doing right now. And, you know, does that answer your question?
I think it does.
Do you have a different answer?
No, I was just going to make a point about that, what you said about helping to allow them to, you know.
So it's a simultaneous activity. They're coming to something else, they come to see you. It isn't just one car, one stop.
Exactly.
It's multiple stops for that one space, so it's not a congestion kind of potential.
We can assume if they're coming from West Roxbury to go to Lido Juice, they're also checking out Nobles and, I mean-
Looping around, and maybe seeing a move, who knows? Yeah, I think it's a good discovery point, definitely.
It's definitely different than what's down there now.
Is there a deck on this building?
A deck.
An outdoor deck?
No.
No?
No.
There's no outdoor seating or anything?
Well, there's not, there's, there's potential for outdoor seating.
In front?
Well, in front. You've got a little pathway that's valve, maybe cement. You've got the sidewalk, see, I'm standing on the sidewalk, and over to the right of this cement path is, I'd say, maybe a nine-by-nine square foot plot of grass.
Okay.
And then on the other side of this, this was Lisa's suggestion, actually, when, when I went in there, she said, you know, what about putting a few cafe tables out in the, out in front? And I said, well, you know, maybe, sounds like a great idea, because I was thinking there's a little spot out back that maybe someone could do that. I think it's a great idea, I just, you know, I think it would enhance the, sort of, the look of downtown. It's not on the sidewalk, it's not changed, you know, right now, it's a, it's got a grade, a little bit of a grade that slopes towards the sidewalk. I could put cafe tables on a sideways hill, so we probably should take, you know, take some, take something out. There'd be a little bit of changing going on to do that. I don't know what that, I don't know who needs to look at to make that happen, but that would fall within our 15 seats.
But it would be on the, on private property, not on the sidewalk, so that would be a difference. But it would be on the, on private property, not on the sidewalk, so that would be a difference. So it sounds like the parking is a wash, though. Back to just wrapping up on the parking, it's whether it was an office or, I mean, whether it was retail or this fifteen seats, it would be the same five, so as long as they don't exceed the fifteen seats.
I think it's actually, because it's an A, it's reduced by twenty-five percent anyway.
By twenty-five percent. That's right. Business A, twenty-five percent reduction.
So they could even make it more than fifteen.
So you could go to whatever is twenty-five percent more than fifteen, as far as seats go.
As far as seats go.
Retail would have also been twenty-five percent, so...
Right.
Right.
Which could be, seats outside.
Right, it's a square.
Eighteen.
Yeah.
No, no, I think what we're saying, what I'm hearing here is that the retail would have always, would have also been granted the twenty-five percent reduction. And so fifteen, fifteen might still be the break-even point.
Because in downtown Hangham, because there is no dedicated parking to that building, we have grandfathered spaces on the street, so whatever's grandfathered with that space goes to you and no more, right? Unless you get some kind of a waiver, so it's five that would go.
So that means you might have to take out one of your inner tables if you're having those outer tables, you know, if it's good weather, you might have to.
Are there any, any additional questions?
One question we had was on the hours of operation. Just so we're clear on that, getting into the permit, so...
I don't think there's any need to expand this, but we are right now eight to six Monday through Saturday. Sundays, we are ten to four. I think maybe Sunday might be a little different over in Hangham. It's pretty, it goes town.
If we were to say eight to six, seven days a week, then you could...
Eight to six, seven days a week, yeah.
We don't want to stay open later during the summertime?
It's only that we would open earlier.
Open earlier as opposed to, we wouldn't close any later than six.
What works for you, so...
You mean if we say, let's, let's say we plan an opening at six and the opening's at six, but chances are we'll never do that.
We just want to put something in the permit. I mean, I think, I think those hours are, six AM maybe a little early.
Six in the morning, you'd really open for visitors.
If we decided to add on, add coffee, I don't know, is Brew Awakenings open at six? It's something we've always thought of, the idea of, you know, but...
Starbucks is open early, I don't know about Brew Awakenings.
Where people pick up a stash of this stuff for the day and they might come in at six to pick up their...
Right.
Well, I suppose the other thing is, it's not like at six in the morning, you're going to have a tough time getting parking space.
Correct.
So I wouldn't have a problem.
Yeah, and in terms of opening, I'd even do, like, till, assume, you're not committing to do it, but like till seven, just to give them flexibility. I don't have an issue with that.
Six AM to seven PM.
Or eight PM in the summertime.
Yeah, eight PM in the summertime, yeah.
I would recommend the only restrictions really be on dumpster pickup because there are residents across the street upstairs.
And you're saying, you're saying to keep, what would be, your prescribed dumpster pickup times, because you're saying too early in the morning is going to disturb the residents who live downtown, right?
Yes.
And then in the middle of the day is no good because it's congested down there. So is that an evening thing or...
Well, dumpster guys are... It starts at seven, so...
I would say, you know, morning is fine.
Okay.
It's not real early in the morning.
And they don't come real early for nap.
Yeah, right, exactly.
No one's coming at six o'clock, they're hard to wait in Cohasset.
Given that you might have some outdoor seating, are there any plans for lighting?
Lighting?
Yeah.
Outdoor lighting?
Yes.
I haven't thought of that. I really haven't. I would assume...
That is something you would need to know about if you were...
The only thing I would, I would think would make sense if it was dusk or getting dark, then you would need some lighting. It would be a safety situation. That's what I'd be concerned about, so it might be some low landscape lighting, so you can see where you're walking, but nothing as far as, you know, not the heat torch that is at the ski mountain, you know what I mean? Nothing like that. Lighting the sign? What's the...
Well, yeah, I want to ask you about the signs. I don't see anything in the application about signs. I mean, obviously, we've got a...
Right, I don't, is that a building department?
We've got a pretty, there are certain size signs that you can get through building permit.
As far as I, as far as I, we're just going to go with what's the, we're going to conform to what the standard is for the, we don't need to exceed that at all. Oh, yeah, we've got just two little follow spots, or not follow spots, but just two, two spots that, they're hologens, you know, that go on our hanging sign right now, so...
External, yes.
Yeah.
Right, uh-huh. Only external.
Yep.
Business district A. Yeah, you get four square feet with a building permit.
So, the gentleman sitting to your right will give you any guidance you need on the sign.
Mr. Glancy, the building...
Yeah, sure. Well, we, I've only spoken briefly and we are going to, I have spoken to the health department. We had a booth at the farmer's market last summer, we're continuing that this year as well. But we're going to speak with the health department, we're going to actually meet with them so we make sure our, our site plan is going to be in conform. That's before we get to the building.
You get a little sign up.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak on this application? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna, I'm going to propose to the planning board that we actually, we move to waive site plan review. It seems like all of the work is going to be interior and based on the presentation by the applicant, I don't find anything within our site plan purview would be, should be considered. What does the board think about that?
I would agree.
All right, then I would entertain a motion that we waive site plan review with respect to the application of Lido Juice Incorporated at sixty South Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And we're going to do the A three as well, but I think you guys do your...
Right, we have to do the A two.
Yep.
So there's approval criteria that we have to make findings on in order to grant an A two, so I'm just going to walk through those. We have to find that the use of the site is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw.
I think it is.
I think it is as well. Proposed use complies with the purposes and standards of the, of the relevant sections of this bylaw.
Yes.
And we did talk about that. Specific site is an appropriate location for such use, structure or condition, and is compatible with the characteristics of the surrounding area.
Yes.
It is. Use is developed and operated will create positive impacts or potential adverse impacts will be mitigated.
I see, yep, I see the positive impact.
Right. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. I don't believe there are.
No.
There are not.